Good evening. Welcome to the October 7th City Council Meeting. I'm Gina Louia-Shara. I'm the City Council President, and I will be presiding this evening. This meeting and all participating on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. We'll begin with public comments, then after public comment, we'll convene the meeting. If you wish to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature. It's either in the bottom menu bar under reactions or at the bottom of the participants panel. If you're calling in by phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. If you're having trouble, you may use the chat feature to send a message to me. To ensure equal access and because of open meeting law, technical problems such as not being able to raise your hand are the only thing the chat function is used for and will only be available during public comment. We cannot accept comment or commentary over chat. Private chat or chat only visible on Zoom during a public meeting is antithetical to open meeting process or open public process and violation of the council rules for public participation and violates the spirit and potentially the law of open meeting law. If you want to submit a written public comment, please email it to the citycouncil@northamptonma.gov, and it will be sent to all counselors and will be part of the public record. I'll unmute each raise hand, the order raised to make a comment. Before you begin, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. To ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to speak, the council limits comments to three minutes. You're in no way obligated to use the full three minutes. But if you do, after three minutes, I will ask you to please finish your sentence. According to council rules, we don't respond during public comment as it is your turn and time to speak. So while your comment should be directed to us, you'll understand when we don't respond to you. Our rules also state that counselors and members of the public shall conduct themselves with civility and respect at all times. Your protected speech is a constitutional right and one that we ask you to wield with consideration and respect for all and with recognition that public space that grants you this freedom is shared equally by everyone. Also, according to open meeting law, if someone's disrupting a meeting, they may be removed. You may speak on any topic. It doesn't need to be an item on the agenda. I'll ask that all but the council turn off your video until called upon. Only the person recognized has the floor, and all comments are to be directed to the council. This meeting can also be watched on Channel 15 or by streaming on North Hampton Open Media's YouTube channel and their other platforms. And this recording of the meeting will be available on their open, their government video archive channel, and that's on YouTube. And I thank them as always for their public service. Additionally, if you, I've enabled the live transcript. So if you can't see it, go into your settings, and I think you can enable it for yourself to be able to see it. But you should be able to access that if that's something that you'd like to do. So we are going to start with Margaret Sawyer.
Hi, everyone. My name is Margaret Sawyer. I'm one of the co-directors of the Pioneer Valley Workers Center. And we just want to thank the council for considering the resolution tonight in support of the Fairness for Farm Workers Act. We're very grateful to you for suggesting this idea of passing a resolution and grateful that you would consider putting the city forward to make this statement. The Workers' Center has been working with farmworkers almost since the very beginning that we started in 2014. We began a survey campaign with restaurant workers in the city of North Hampton. And then you all, we were so glad to work with you on the wage theft ordinance. But we started also a survey project with the UMass Labor Center. We've been talking to farmworkers across the valley. We've been learning about the need, people feeling that they're not earning very much money, that it's very difficult to make a living wage, that some people earn less than the minimum wage of the $13.50 that's there now. So we've been really excited to be able to partner with this new coalition, the Fairness for Farm Workers. And our members have been voting and encouraging the Workers' Center to step forward and speak about farmworker issues. My colleague, my co-director Claudia Rosales, is a, she's a former farmworker, and she's been organizing with farmworkers and has met in person with over 200 farmworkers during the course of the pandemic, as have my other colleagues on one-on-one meetings. But we've also increased our base of farmworkers from about 200 food chain workers, restaurants and farms before the pandemic to now over 500 people connected on our WhatsApp groups and over 1,200 who've received support through our solidarity fund and receive all our updates. And those people together really feel that this bill is really important, that it's not fair that the state of Massachusetts pays farmworkers less than the regular minimum wage. It's not fair that there's no overtime protections for most of the field workers. And that it's not fair that there's no day of rest for people. And given the unusual nature of farmwork and the harvest season, to have a day of rest where you're paid time and a half if you work is really important. So we're really grateful, and we hope the state listens to you. Thank you. I also may be asked to interpret for someone else who's coming, maybe coming.
Absolutely. Thanks. Next is Jessie Hassenger.
Hello. Thank you so much. My name is Jessie Hassenger, Ward Four. I am here to also speak in support of the Fairness of Farm Workers Act. I agree with everything that was just said previously to me by Margaret. I would like to add that as the business co-owner of Belly of the Beast, when we were designing our idea, it was all around local farms and working with local farms. And they are the lifeblood of our community. And the more that we see that happens around climate emergency and the more issues that we see coming from big agriculture, the more that we're going to need to rely on local farmers. And that means that we need to make sure that not only do the farms stay solvent, but that means that the farmworkers themselves are able to survive of that employment. It is vital for many people in our community to be raising the wage here. I would also like to voice my support for Karen Foster's urging to change the language in the street parking ordinance from handicap to accessible. There's no reason in 2021 that we should still be using antiquated language. And if it's inconsistent with wording elsewhere in the city, then that all needs to change, beginning with this ordinance. Thank you so much.
Next is Mimi.
Hi, Mimi Rogers from Ward Six, 97 Glendale Road. I'm first supposed to go our street. I'm sorry. I'm not doing a camera tonight because I've had a long day. I just want to say that repeating the, reemphasizing the words of Margaret Sawyer and Jessie, that I am here in favor of the farmworker resolution. I had the pleasure of taking someone from the eastern part of the state who'd never been here and kind of driving through some of these areas and see some of our beautiful farmland that we have here. It's just gorgeous and glorious. We're very fortunate to have that here in western Massachusetts. And it's just unseeming to think that the farmworkers that are brought in here are not paid fair wages, are not given the same kind of protections as other workers. It just doesn't seem to go, it just doesn't seem to be reflective of what Massachusetts seems to want to put out there, that we are this very progressive state that cares about people. And I know it's also something that the city of North Hampton professes to believe in as well. So I really encourage every city council to support this resolution so that it can go in with the strongest support to our state representative Lindsay Sabadosa and for Senator Comaford so that we can get as much support that we can say that this city of all of our registered voters are supporting this. You know, our representative government is doing it. It's very important in the legislative process, which is a difficult process in the state. But I really support this resolution. I also just want to say, I also agree about changing the word to accessibility. We just need to move away from faded phrases. And finally, I just, I don't know what's happening with the redistricting, but please, please, please let me continue to say in Ward Six so I can continue to have the best city council there is, Councilor Mary Ann LaBarge. And you all have a wonderful rest of your day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Erica Johnson.
Hi there. This is Shannon Walsh with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. I, for some reason, cannot change my colleague Erica's name, but I'm happy to have her name next to my face. So I'm the historic preservation planner for the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Thank you very much for listening to me tonight. I just have some brief comments on the Hampshire and Hamden Canal Documentation Project. Since early 2020, my colleague Eric Weiss and I have had the pleasure of working with North Hampton, East Hampton, Southampton, Westfield, Russell, and Southwick in planning for this regional project to formally document the entire length of the 19th century Hampshire and Hamden Canal and related resources in Massachusetts. Two years of district local technical assistance funding has allowed PVPC to work with these communities to facilitate the development of a scope and an RFP to produce documentation to meet standards of the Massachusetts Historical Commission. Since early in the pandemic, we've had regular virtual meetings with our regional team, and their dedication has made it clear how important this project is to the canal communities. North Hampton has been a lead community in this project. Sarah LaValley and GIS Coordinator James Thompson have helped to produce a digital map of the canal based on historic and current geolocational data, which involved some of our team going out with our cell phones to get coordinates to pass back to James Thompson. And this will really be a great asset to help support the consultant. So I'm really thankful to be a part of this dedicated regional team, and I'm looking forward to next steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Harris Freeman.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. I want to join the chorus of voices of residents and others who are here to express support for the Fairness for Farm Workers Act. I live here in North Hampton. I teach labor and employment law at Western New England University School of Law and at the Labor Center at UMass. And I was part of the team that helped put this bill together. It's a bill that originates here in western Massachusetts. It's sponsored by western Massachusetts legislators. And I think it's critically important for the city of North Hampton to go on record in support of this bill, to see it through the legislature this session. North Hampton is a town whose elected officials have been in the forefront of supporting the rights of immigrants, of low-age workers. And we have an economy in Massachusetts, here in North Hampton, where the food chain piece of the economy is really important. We, we need to take a stand as a city to let the legislature know that a law that allows farmworkers to be paid only $8 an hour, to deny them a day of rest and to deny them any overtime at all for their essential hard work is not in keeping with the laws and the morality and the politics of both our town and the state of Massachusetts. So I urge everybody to read through the resolution carefully. Your support's important. We're going to be having a hearing in the legislature in November. And we'd like to have the town, the city of North Hampton, on record in support of this effort. So thank you for your time and interest in our bill.
Thank you. Rick Last.
Hi, everybody. I'm Rick Last. I live in Ward Six on Emerson Way. And like others here to support the resolution for the Fairness of Farm Worker Act. And just thinking about that, and I've been, as I've gotten involved in a little bit, looking at the history of this. And so tonight, it's not just dealing with standalone resolution, but it's really a legacy of systemic racism, you know, dating back to the exclusion of both farmworkers and domestic workers from New Deal labor protections. The history of excluded workers is deeply racialized. When drafting legislation like in 1935, Social Security, which created legislation for unionization and worker protections under the Fair Labor Standards Act, policymakers very consciously left out two crucial groups, agriculture workers and domestic workers. And both groups were disproportionately laborers of color and continue to be disproportionately represented by people of color today. So just kind of thinking about that history, farmworkers are forced to work inhumane hours because they do not have these overtime protections. And we want to prevent the employers from exploiting their labor. And as you know, Massachusetts has a minimum wage of $13.50, farmworkers $8. And like federal law, Massachusetts wage law doesn't guarantee any time and a half for overtime work. So just kind of looking at a little historical context here and asking Massachusetts to join New York, California, Oregon in eliminating the subminimum standards in wage law.
Thank you. Margaret, are you going to provide translation?
Yes, thank you. I think Audi Gonzalez.
Yeah, yeah, let me unmute. Audi, can you unmute?
Hola, buenas noches.
Hi, good evening.
Lo siento, no tengo la cámara porque no estoy en casa. Si la pongo está muy oscuro.
I'm sorry, I don't have the camera on. I'm not at home. And if I put it on, it's very dark.
So, no entendí mucho muy bien al respecto de qué es plana. Me gustaría algo rapidito, un resumencito rápido para yo dar mi punto, mi punto de mi tema, pues o mi palabra al respecto.
Sure. Audi says she was expecting that there would be a time that we're reviewing the resolution so that she could talk about it. So es que van a apoyar a la ley de trabajadores del campo. La consejo está pensando aprobar como una resolución apoyando los trabajadores del campo.
¿Qué tipo de apoyo?
Van a aprobar una ley que dice que ellos quieren que el estado pasa la ley para los trabajadores del campo.
Cuando yo veo $8, pero no estoy muy clara. ¿$8 es lo que el trabajador del campo debe de ganar o más, o que le paguen más de $8? ¿Cómo la, cómo entendí esa parte?
Creo que por ahora la ley dice que es 8, pero este grupo va a aprobar una regla que, que la gente deben de ganar más.
Oh, right, right, okay. Definitivamente estoy de acuerdo también porque con $8 hoy en día no se sobrevive, sobre todo si hay una familia grande, todo hoy en día está mucho más caro.
Yes, she said it's really not fair for it to be quite so low that farm workers would earn so little because, especially with families, it's not possible to survive on that amount. So ellos quieren nada más oir tu opinión. I said they're just here to hear your opinion.
Oh, sí, sí, no, claro. Y gracias por la oportunidad. Como trabajadora del campo, me gustaría muchísimo. Esto es un sueño que yo he tenido desde que yo llegué a este país, de que, de que valoren el trabajo, el trabajo, el trabajo que hace el trabajador agrícola. Porque trabaja muy duro y es un trabajo que nadie valora.
Thank you so much for working on this tonight. It's been a dream of mine since I came to this country that people would value the work of farm workers and would take it seriously. No one has, has done that. It hasn't been often that we've been valued, and I appreciate it. Es solo tres minutos, so.
Oh, my God. Okay. So muchas gracias por esta lucha y espero se logre pasar esta resolución porque es, es algo más humano para el trabajador, porque el trabajador del campo trabaja muy duro a exlemencias del tiempo, ya sea frío, calor, y no es valorado. Es como una máquina nada más que lo ven, no como un ser humano, tristemente.
People see us just as machines. They don't value our work. And it's really beautiful that you're working on this tonight. I hope that it passes, and thank you.
Thank you. So I just wanted, I should have told you this ahead of time. For translation, we doubled the time, and I didn't start until it was sort of clear what, you know, that.
Oh, right.
So you have more time if you want to keep speaking.
Oh, my.
No sé si quieres que te recite, tal vez también.
Okay, sí, también este soy este dueña y socia de una pequeña farm que está empezando, se llama Riquezas del Campo.
I'm also a co-owner and a socio, an owner of the Riquezas del Campo farm that restarted recently through the workers' center.
Y el trabajo como cooperativa es muy difícil hacer un trabajador con patrón que es mucho más, más duro. Y Dios quiera y nuestra cooperativa crezca y podamos invitar mucho más gente que, que valore ese trabajo, que sabe trabajar duro y poder echar palante en algo, en algo que puede llegar a ser grande.
And we're really, you know, we work hard to find people willing to do the hard work of working in the fields. It's very difficult work, and we, as we grow, we're moving the business forward. Qué bueno. Hay algo más que quieres decir, o? Está bien, Timo.
Bueno, que felicitarles y darle la gracia por esta iniciativa. Y este, pues Dios quiere este, este sueño se vea realizado un día de que el trabajador sea evaluado, tenga un precio, un pago justo, un trato justo y humano. Eso es todo lo que se podría pedir en resumiendo las palabras.
I just want to really thank you for taking this time and for considering this bill, this resolution. I hope that it passes. It's really important that people are thinking about farm workers and valuing the work that we do, that farm workers do. I thank you. And I want to apologize to Audi and to you. I don't think I explained very well what this was going to be like. I think she thought it was more of a conversation. Disculpa, Audi, digo aquí que no, no te expliqué muy bien cómo iba a ser. So gracias.
Yeah, fue something quickly, but it's fine. So thank you for the opportunity, and thank you to all of being here.
Thank you. Thanks for speaking with us.
Buenas noches, Estelio. Gracias.
Gracias. Next is Celine. Celine, did I say that?
Hi, hi, I'm Celine. I live here in North Hampton. And I just wanted to second what Audi and Rick and others have said in support of the farm workers bill being going through. It's a long past time for us to value farm workers' work. It's sort of outrageous that we're still even having to have this conversation about valuing people who, you know, who work very hard and who are indigenous to this continent, are working their land, and they certainly deserve at least the same minimum pay and breaks and treatment that we would give any worker. So yeah, the only other thing I wanted to say, because I've worked on these issues for many years in many different farm communities. And sometimes there is a problem with small farms being able to always support these kind of measures. This shouldn't be a problem. Certainly corporate farms have no problem. And if they're not paying minimum wage, that's outrageous. As far as some of the small farms, and I know we have a lot of small farms in the area, I would hope that if it is a problem, and I didn't read the whole bill, excuse me if there are provisions for this, but there should be some means to support small farmers to be able to pay their workers what they deserve to be paid and be able to give them, you know, this is minimum. But just in case, you know, we know that small farms are struggling. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for giving me the time to do this. And I hope that everybody will take this really seriously and just pass this through. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mara or Mara Schulman.
There you go. Hi, sorry, I was having a little trouble getting the mute off. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So I just want to voice my support for this. I read the resolution, and I'm really proud to live in a community that has, that is on the verge of passing this. In particular, I really want to voice my support. I don't want to replicate, duplicate anything anyone else has already said, but I really want to voice my support for the acknowledgement of historical structural racism that is at the root of this disparate pay structure. And, and I really appreciate how the drafters of this resolution have acknowledged that, included that in a separate paragraph in the resolution. I think it's paragraph seven. And I'm very grateful to have people representing me in the city that are stepping up to acknowledging the history of structural racism in our country, in our, in our, in our employment, in our economy, and, and taking action to remedy it. So thanks very much. And thank you for working so hard on this, and I look forward to seeing the consequences of it passing.
Thank you. Um, can you all still hear me? Okay, I, that thing is happening where I've lost all the controls and I can't see everything. I don't, are there other hands that I can't see right now? No, okay. I'm going to leave the Zoom, come back in, and then if there are no cans that have come, popped up, then we'll convene. But I'm going to disappear. One of you will be made host. I don't know which one. We'll find out. How exciting.
It was me. I made host.
Congratulations.
She got the short of the long.
I'm not quite sure what to do with this honor.
You can make a, you know, Oscar posters.
It's not like we can just continue on with the meeting because the next thing is roll call.
I'm wondering if Laura, since she has all this power, isn't letting Council Shara back in?
Oh, yeah.
I think the waiting room's been disabled, so she should come right back. It did get hand raised in the meantime. That's true.
All right. Laura, do we have a timer? Does somebody have a timer?
It's on Counselor LaBar, I mean, Counselor Shara's screen. Actually, I don't have it.
Well, I'd like to. Right, so Council Quinlan has a timer and Laura, can you unmute Ellen?
Sure.
Ellen Coate, looks like she's got her hand raised for public comment.
Yeah. Oh, Asta, okay. Go to the big view. She's unmuted.
Hello.
I am coming, I'm coming. I just want to, okay, well.
You have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to, where am I? Yeah. I just want to start the video. That's all. Okay, thanks very much for recognizing me. Two things fairly quickly. One is I want to go on record supporting the farm resolution, which I think is extremely important. Secondly, I just wanted to say, stressed I was at the behavior of the North Hampton Arts Council. It was really shocking to see that they canceled this exhibit and what that decision was based on. And as a local artist, I took great offense at the censorship and, and the decision to cancel the show. And I just want to go on record saying that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
I see that Council Shara has returned and maybe can't unmute.
Okay. Scrolling down to try to find her. There she is. Okay.
Hi, everybody. That is an inhospitable start to this meeting that happened so early on.
Well, I return the helm to you, Counselor Shara.
Thank you. Well, well done. I see we did have more public comments, so good. So we have not yet convened. And Laura, when you get a moment, if you could make me host, then I will have some controls back. But I'll make a, put out a last call for public comment. I'm not seeing any hands. I'm not seeing anything in the chat. Someone who was, didn't leave, could someone check the chat and just see? Because now I see a blank chat, so I just want to make sure there's nothing in there that I missed. But one of the co-hosts? All good? Okay.
I'm in there.
All right, so seeing no other comments, Laura, will you please take the role?
Sure. Counselor Dwight.
Here.
Counselor Foster.
Here.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor LaBarge.
Here.
Counselor Maori.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor Quinlan.
Here.
Counselor Shara.
Here for now.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, let me find all my windows. We are convening. Let me find the agenda. Okay, first up, we have the announcement of a public hearing. This is a public hearing on application to amend the license for storage of flammables and combustibles for two underground storage tanks, 1 to 24,000 gallons gasoline, and one is 24,000 gallons and one is 12,000 gallons diesel at 506 Pleasant Street. The city council will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 21st, 2021, at 7:05 PM by remote participation. Instructions for accessing the hearing may be found on the October 21st, 2021 city council agenda to be posted on the city's website, northhamptonma.gov. At least 48 hours prior to the meeting, the city council will hear all persons who wish to be heard thereon. And that council meeting begins at 7:00 PM. The application is linked to our current agenda, and will be on that agenda as well. Are there any updates from committee chairs?
Oh, no.
Counselor Dwight and Counselor Maori.
First, I actually have to check with Laura. Laura, where are we at with the legislative matters? Potential legislative matters?
Three out of four have said they are able to make the 18th.
Okay, so that's a quorum. So legislative matters will be convening. I'm sorry?
Oh, May. That's, we're, that's, we're going to have a discussion about that a little bit.
Oh, May. I thought you were saying we're doing it in the month of May. I'm not going to be there, so just, no, not going to show. But May, how's that? May convene on the 18th to discuss the item that will relative to redistricting. I will hear a presentation on immediately. And that, that will be the sole item, as far as I can tell. No, there may be, no, just for that, it's a special meeting, and time is of the essence on this issue, so.
Excellent. Counselor Maori.
Yeah, so the next city council rule selecting me will be next Tuesday, October 12th, at 6:00 PM on Zoom. The link will be in the agenda on the city website.
Great, thank you. Any other committees rolling into one-minute announcements? Counselor LaBarge.
Yes, thank you. Just a reminder, I'm pretty sure all you counselors and all the residents in the city received a booklet which has so many artists coming into our city of North Hampton, the Paradise City Art. Which has so many artists coming into our city of Northampton, the Paradise City Arts. It's wonderful. Last year, they were not here because of the COVID, but they will be here starting October ninth through the eleventh. And it's just absolutely wonderful. Linda and Jeffrey Post are residents of Board Six. And they are the directors and started this Paradise City Arts. And I have never ever seen so many artists with such beautiful work that they do. I'm talking about painting, sculpturing, clothing, it's it's just absolutely beautiful. And also the restaurants that are there, their food is scrumptious and the children would love it, so. Hopefully, everybody will come either one of those dates on the ninth, tenth, and eleventh. And let's support our Paradise City Arts, they're back, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Other announcements. Counselor Quinlan.
Just um wanted to take a moment uh for some reflection on the life loss of the cyclist in front of Northampton High School the other day. You know, the circumstances of the accident aren't clear um at this time, but uh it just gave me pause to think about this. I know I've had calls from residents in the area and some teachers at Northampton High that are concerned about the safety at that intersection in front of Northampton High. And I just would encourage all Northampton residents to just pay great attention when you're operating a vehicle. Especially here in Northampton, we're working very hard to create greater bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. And we have to consider everyone on the roadway, so I I would just ask you to join me in in trying to pay better attention when you're behind the wheel.
Thank you for that. Any other announcements? Okay, seeing none. Um Mayor Nakowitz, you said you had uh communication for us?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Um I just wanted to follow up on the uh presentation that I gave at the last City Council meeting on September twenty-second. About the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA. Um one of the issues or one of the items on the timeline that I uh laid out. Um that was that the city would be launching um an online survey um uh for um residents. Uh business owners, uh property owners, um anyone who lives in the city uh to take. Um and we did launch that on October first, it's available on the city's website um in both English and Spanish versions. And um we've had a great response so far since launching it. Um I think we're close to seven hundred responses already uh in less than a week. Um so I would encourage folks to go to that page, northhamptonma.gov uh backslash ARPA, A R P A. And you'll find the links for both surveys and obviously, please share with your friends and neighbors. Um so we can obviously begin to collect some of the initial data about what the public is thinking about. Uh the important priorities for the city as it begins looking at how uh to create a process uh for spending these federal dollars. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Counselor Foster.
Mayor, um thank you for that update. I saw the survey and actually I had a question for you um that I think people would be interested in, if you don't mind answering. Uh one of the early questions on that survey asks for people's street address with the caveat that um survey results are totally anonymous. And I was wondering if you could just explain that a little bit more. If if, or uh sorry to catch you off guard with that.
That's okay. Yeah, I mean, I I think we are trying to understand geogra- uh we were trying to get a better understanding geographically in the city where people are living and where some of the priorities are. Um so I think that was part of it, obviously it will not be shared in any way. Um so that I think that was the the basis for that. Um and so, yeah, that's my, um that's my understanding of trying to get a little bit of a narrow. Or zooming in a little bit on different parts of the city and where and where people um are responding from.
So if if, just to be sure, so then the street address is to see where the responses are coming from, but they're not attached to the survey results that are coming in.
Yeah, and all of the questions are optional, there's no mandatory questions, you get, there's no questions that stop you from continuing the survey. So a- anyone's free to leave questions blank if they do not wish to.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Counselor Jarrett?
Uh yes, thank you. Um I noticed uh that it asks that all adult Northampton residents are encouraged to uh fill this out. And I was curious, I know we, we have a youth commission and um that we value uh the input of young people. And I was curious, is is that something that that ARPA is is part of, you know, that that we, that we're not including the voices of youth in that? Um so I was curious about that.
I think um I I think obviously we're always open to, you know, the the Youth Commission weighing in on all matters that come before city government. Um I think the goal of this was to reach out to uh, you know, registered voters in the city to get their input on on that. And so I think that's probably what the the nomenclature was in reference to um adults. Um but again, I think that uh folks who are, will certainly be seeking the input of lots of different um constitu- constituencies. Uh you know, um multi-member bodies like the Youth Commission, et cetera. But yeah, I think, believe it was uh targeted, um um, you know, targeted. Uh to try to understand what voters of Northampton were feeling about these funds.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other hands, we will move on. Thank you for that um update. And we are up to resolutions, so twenty-one point three four zero. A resolution in support of the Fairness to Farm Workers Act. This is upon the recommendation of Counselor Rachel Maori, Counselor Mary Ann Labarge, and Counselor Michael J. Quinlan Junior. Uh whereas farming in the Commonwealth is a vibrant part of our state economy, providing consumers with healthy local food options, preserving open land, supporting our local economy, and reducing our carpet footprint. Whereas Hampshire County has six hundred and ninety-two farms and fifty thousand six hundred and forty-four acres. Two hundred and thirteen of these farms hire farmworkers with a total of one thousand two hundred and sixty-seven farmworkers employed in the county. Whereas farmworkers in Massachusetts are at present denied the wage and hour protections provided to other workers. Miring farmworkers and their families in unjust work and living conditions. Twice as many farmworker families now live in severe poverty as compared to other families. And whereas farmworkers additionally face unique worth workplace hazards and health concerns resulting from long work hours, exposure to pesticides. And a physically demanding, fast-paced work environment. Agricultural workers alongside those in the fishing industry experience the highest rate of occupational fatalities in Massachusetts. And whereas despite the elevated health and safety risks farmworkers face. Many farmworkers in the Commonwealth lack benefits and resources to help address health issues. For example, eighty-eight percent of Massachusetts farmworkers surveyed by the Pioneer Valley Worker Center reported that their employers did not offer paid sick days. And approximately eighty percent of the Connecticut River Valley Farm Worker Health Programs, Massachusetts Farm Worker Patients, did not have health insurance in twenty nineteen. And whereas farmworkers in Massachusetts are overwhelmingly immigrants originating from Latin America. And whereas the longstanding exclusion of farmworkers from our state's minimum wage and overtime protections afforded to virtually all other employees, including other essential workers. Is part of a national legacy of structural racism and inequality. Based in the exclusion of farmwork from the National Landmark Workplace Legislation of the nineteen thirties to allow for the continued economic exploitation of African-American farmworkers. And whereas Massachusetts law should not permit a disproportionately immigrant and black and Latino workforce to earn a poverty-inducing wage. That is forty percent lower than the current state minimum wage, essentially relegating farmworkers to a second-class employee status under the Wage and Hour Law of Massachusetts. And whereas the Fairness for Farm Workers Act, S uh twelve oh five and H nineteen seventy-nine. One, sets the wage for farmworkers at a state minimum wage. Two, provides overtime pay for all farmworkers. Seasonal farmworkers will receive one and a half times their normal rate of pay for work performed in excess of fifty-five hours in a week. Three, establishes the right to a day of rest each week for seasonal farmworkers, providing overtime pay at time and a half for workers who elect to work on that day of rest. And whereas the Fairness to Farm Workers Act has been endorsed by the Fairness for Farm Workers Coalition comprised of leading organizations such as ACLU Massachusetts, Central West Justice Center. Massachusetts Immigrant and Refugee Advocacy Coalition, Massachusetts Law Review Institute, Massachusetts AFL-CIO, Massachusetts Coalition for Occupational Safety and Health. Pioneer Valley Worker Center, Western Massachusetts, Western Massachusetts Area Labor Federation, Massachusetts United Food and Commercial Workers Local fourteen fifty-nine. And whereas the elimination of the substandard farmworker wage is sound economic policy that will benefit the entire state. A recent report published by the University of Massachusetts Political Economy Research Institute indicates that changes proposed by the Fairness for Farm Workers Act would result in a nominal increase for most farms' annual production costs. And now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of Northampton hereby endorses the Fairness to Farm Workers Act and acts and asks the state legislature to move to its passage with all deliberate speed. Be it further resolved, the administrative assistant of the City Council shall send a copy of this resolution to bills, to bill sponsors, Senators Adam Gomez and Adam Hines, and Representatives Carlos Gonzalez and Paul Mark. The Fairness for Farm Workers Coalition, Governor Charles Baker, Attorney General Mark Healy, Representative Lindsay Sabadosa, and State Senator Joe Commerford. Okay, is there a motion, please?
Move to approve, please.
Second.
Second.
Much as they were, Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Quinlan, and I will uh start with the sponsors if they'd like to speak first. Counselor Maori and Counselor Labarge.
Yeah, so um I I really want to thank my co-sponsors, thank you to Counselor Labarge for bringing this to our attention and um also to my co- my co-sponsor, Michael Quinlan. This has been an issue I know I've talked about before that's close to my heart. And you know, when I worked on as the Regional Director for Jobs with Justice on the ballot initiative to increase the minimum wage in Massachusetts to fifteen dollars. It, we were thrilled that it passed, but there was a special pain because I knew farmworkers and other uh dairy workers and such were being left behind. And so I, this is, I'm so grateful that this act is is being put forth. There's other uh states, you know, California, Colorado, New York, Ohio, South Dakota, and so on, um that have passed similar um acts to try to correct this historic wrong. Um you, I, you know, I, when I worked with farmworkers um in my public health capacity, I tried, I did the work. Um for, you know, I did the work for a day, just a day, and it was a humbling experience. I mean, it's just the repetitive, it's, you have to imagine like repetitive nature of doing that same motion, even something that seems not very, you know. Even the little things that don't seem much fun if you do them one or two times, but when you do them, the hours and the days that farmworkers are doing them. Um it's really humbling and um it's, it was, it was frustrating because of, there's so much that gets in the way of um. Of providing uh, you know, good health options and and um access to health. Uh there's, there's the poverty, there's the substandard living, and it's all compounded by immigration status and power, you know, and and feeling um kind of powerless. And I was, I went up and down the East Coast Stream and um, you know, trying to convince farmworkers to wear gloves when they're being, um because of pesticide exposure when they're being paid by the bushel. And all these things are even trying to track health data and vaccines and with the seasonal population. And so I think this, I I think this is, you know, long coming and um. I I think, I think we could all agree that farmworkers deserve, you know, the same rights as other workers in our state. And I I I just want to caution, you know, this isn't an adversarial um. You know, issue. I it, I think what benefits, um, you know, we all treasure our local uh small farms and um I think this this benefits. Um when I said that, when when that was in the resolution, what I meant about how it benefits everyone is because, first of all. Uh most of our farmers pay more than eight dollars and they should, you know, and that's great. And so this isn't as big a leap as it seems because uh many farm farm uh owners and farmers are already paying that to their workers. Uh so, but also when you put, you know, it's been shown that when you put money in the pockets of people, it's gonna benefit the local economy. It's gonna create better health and more stability for these workers, and that will benefit the farm farm owners and the farmers and all of us. So we have to look at it that way as well. Um. Yeah, so this kind of just basically codifies what we think should happen, you know, there might be some farmers who do pay a close to the minimum wage, the minimum wage is. At thirteen fifty, I believe, and it going up to fifteen, but um but this will just make it, you know, this will make it law. Uh and so I think um. I think it's more, you know, this is the time for this to happen and um, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. And I also wanted to say that we have a community expert uh here with us tonight uh to answer any of our counselors' questions. Um if we want to recognize her, Claudia Kimperold is a staff attorney for the Migrant and Seasonal Farm Worker Project at the Central West Justice Center. And she's here with us tonight, so if anyone, any counselors um would like to, you know, any, you know, more details on this, the act itself. Um I'm sure Claudia would be happy to answer. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, and welcome, Claudia. Uh Counselor Labarge. Oh, you're muted, Counselor Labarge.
When I read about the Fairness for Farm Workers Act. I couldn't believe what I was reading. I actually showed it to my husband. And he said, this is so unfair, Mary Ann. I had to call Rachel because in my heart, I could not believe this was happening. I never knew this was happening to our farmworkers. And I want to thank Rachel for stepping in and I did research, she did research, Margaret from the Pioneer Valley Workers was excellent. It is time, it is time to make it fair, and this is not fair at all. Fifty to sixty hours, no overtime, and the environment part of it, they're there, they're planting, they're digging. And you're looking at health issues here, not even a day of rest. That is not fair, that is not fair, and I find there is a racial problem here with this, and this bothers me, bothers me. I have relatives in Brazil, they farm, and they have farm. And everybody deserves the rights, the rights of respect and dignity, there's no question about this. We need to be fair here, and I really feel that. The wages, I I just cannot believe this. How? Because just being farmworkers and we have a state law on a minimum wage. And they're getting eight fifty an hour, sometimes they might hit twelve dollars an hour. And working fifty to sixty hours a week, I find this to be racial, that's how I feel about this. And I I want this to stop, I really want this to stop. They deserve, all our farmworkers deserve respect and dignity. And they deserve to have that minimum wage, just like everybody else gets that. And also to be able to have a day of rest, we need to get them out of poverty because that is poverty. And I also feel that their housing is not the best that they're getting. So we have a lot to work on here, our farmworkers, they give us the nutrition that we need in our community and throughout the whole state. So I am really hoping that the councilors will support this tonight. Please support it, it is very, very valuable. And I'm hoping because we have a time limit, and I think Counselor Maori, isn't there a meeting coming up October eighteenth?
I believe it moved to November uh ninth, or we can ask Claudia, but yes, there's a legislative hearing coming up, so it would be great.
Exactly, and I know with um Counselor Rachel Maori, she also did talk with one of the representatives on it and sent us some excellent, excellent information. And I thank you for doing that also. So I am hoping tonight that we can move this on. I think all our farmworkers deserve us as city councilors here in the city of Northampton. To help, to help our farmworkers be able to deserve what is right to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Labarge, Counselor Quinlan.
Oh, thank you very much, and thank you very much to Counselors Maori and Labarge uh for welcoming me as a co-sponsor of this resolution. Uh President Franklin Roosevelt famously said, "The best customer of American industry is a well-paid worker." I'm not trying to talk about capitalism or commercialism here, honestly, thinking about this resolution, I spent a lot of time thinking about how privileged I am. That I don't have to do the backbreaking work to farm my own vegetables, but have the great joy of enjoying fresh, ripe local vegetables at home. I think what we're talking about here is um is obviously paying farmworkers a fair wage so they can afford to feed, clothe, and care for themselves and their families with dignity. Tomorrow, I think you'll see a column in the Gazette by John Parody uh about taking care of workers. And in the, in the, the disparity between what um owners make and CEOs make versus workers. Uh and I thought it was interesting that I just read that this afternoon, uh because it was posted uh this afternoon, and it just says we're talking about this very thing. And I thought it was interesting that I just read that this afternoon because it was posted this afternoon and just as we're talking about this very thing. So finally, I'll just say that I support this because I believe that we should all want what's best for our friends and neighbors. So again, thank you very much to the co-sponsors for inviting me in and I'll look forward to us all working together on this resolution.
Thank you. Other other comments from counselors? Are any questions? Counselor Foster.
Just a comment. I'd like to thank the sponsors for bringing this issue forward and providing, you know, a platform for you know, to raise this issue for people to discuss it and for education as well. I think that, you know, it's, it's, it's something I've struggled with for many years, the sort of kind of uniquely American desire, maybe it's not uniquely American, but there's a hefty American desire for cheap food. And it causes a tremendous amount of suffering, you know, from climate impacts, environmental impacts, animal suffering and the suffering of the people who are responsible for providing that cheap food. And, you know, paying farm workers is, is one very important piece of a much larger puzzle. And I appreciate you bringing this issue forward and of course it has my support.
Thank you, Counselor Foster. Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I was, I thank the sponsors for bringing this forward. I'm definitely supporting this. And I also really appreciated the level of accommodation that we demonstrated tonight to hear from folks who were affected by this. And I found that it was, it's just great community work and and I appreciate the courage of folks to come forward and, and speak here at council. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jarrett.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for bringing this forward. It's definitely in support. I do have a few questions, two conversations that I'm having just about some of the details in, in the act. And so unless there is a real need to move it forward, I don't know if there was some talk there about having a second reading tonight. And but if the dates allow, I'd prefer to have a second reading in two weeks just to get the, finish those conversations. But if there is a need to, you know, in terms of legislatively for a hearing, then I understand that, that need and would vote for that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Mayori, is that right that the hearing's now been moved?
Actually, this might be a great time to recognize Claudia Quintero, if that's okay with folks. Or we could wait right after the counselor speak because I know they were updated today and I believe, and she, and she might have some comments that would be helpful.
Do you want to make that motion?
Yes, sorry. Move to recognize Claudia Quintero.
Most notably by Counselor Mayori, I think it was taken by Counselor Nash. Any discussion on that recognition? Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry Claudia, that's process we have to go through, but you are now recognized and you should be able to unmute.
Appreciate that. Good evening, everybody. I'm so happy to be here. My name is Claudia Quintero and I'm the staff attorney for migrant and seasonal farm workers. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my internet's a little spotty sometimes. And I represent farm workers across the state of Massachusetts and I've been here for four years doing this. And I'm so honored to be before the city council and I'd just like to thank you all for considering this resolution and taking the time to think through and talk through and learn about this issue. It's very important. To answer the question about the hearing, it's we've been in communication with the sponsors. I'm also help lead the Fairness for Farm Worker Coalition. And so we've been in communication with some of the sponsor staff about when our bill would be heard. And we believe it's slated for November ninth as of right now. So there is a little bit of, of time for folks to ask more questions, get more information, have conversations and such. I think the one thing I would say, which I would like to impress upon the Northampton City Council is that we have a lot of wonderful farmers in the area and we have a lot of great local people who really care about farm workers. And as Counselor Mayori mentioned at the beginning, this is not an adversarial thing at all. The purpose of this bill, which I, among other folks, helped draft, is that this is really a time to put Massachusetts' feet to the fire and get that, get the state legislature in a place to really provide equity for all workers in our state. As folks have mentioned, we have thirteen thousand farm workers across the state and these farm workers most often are not voters. They are not people who are really making a, an impact in the policies that are, have a voice and impact policies that are being made. Previously, we've had other farm workers who say, you know, we really need people to be our voice because we don't have that voice in our, in the state's policies that are made or written about us that affect us. And so having a resolution like that really is saying to the state that, you know, now is the time to be that progressive state that you say you are, be that state that protects workers across the country, be an example for the region and do the thing that, you know, just makes sense because we do have a lot of farmers that pay more than eight dollars an hour. We do have a lot of farmers that care about their workforce and so it's not, that's, that's not the concern that we have. It's about creating dignity for everybody. And so we're really grateful that folks are here, hearing farm, farm workers out because it is highly skilled labor that deserves to be valued and, and you know, recognized for the work that it is. Because as a farm worker advocate, I don't know anything about farming. I don't, I couldn't go out there and do it for an hour, you know, but it's, it's hard, very skilled work. So, thank you again. And I'm happy to answer any questions that counselors may have tonight or beyond tonight as well. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, any other comments or questions? Counselor Mayori?
Well, there's a Scrivener error that maybe I'll bring, I make a friendly amendment. So it's in the third, the third page. I just want some consistency. It says the Fairness to Farm Workers Act on the third page and it should be for Farm Workers Act. And then I, and then down the first now there, and now therefore be resolved, the same issue, turn the two to a four.
Okay. Got it.
And yeah, and I, you know, I would, I hear my fellow counselor Jarrett, I, you know, I would respectfully ask us to to do two readings tonight because really, as we know, one of the purposes of a resolution is to kind of build momentum towards, you know, a state, a larger call. And so this is a really timely in that way, even though technically they've moved hearing a little bit out. I think having it be finalized would help that, build that momentum and would give other municipalities time to actually explore their own resolutions when they see that we finalized one. So I would, you know, I'm putting that out there.
Counselor Dwight.
And I appreciate the sense of urgency, but another purpose of a resolution is to do precisely what Counselor Jarrett's proposing, which is to expand the conversation. What we've, what we've seen so far with testimony tonight, an issue of education that's occurred. And that is the strength of this, to actually engage a community in a conversation about an issue that, that may not, may not be too aware of. And it would just, in passing into readings tonight, that's the end of it. It may not even make the newspaper, in which case the conversation doesn't go forward. The constituency that the representatives who will be voting on this who need to hear from will, you know, probably not reach out to them. I, I don't, I, I appreciate, and by the way, I, I'm a little concerned because I don't think we actually have that much influence in other communities. I don't think they care what we do. Well, if only to make fun of us, but that's fine. I'm, I'm down with that. But the fact is, I don't think with the first vote, and I'm going to guess here, but I have a feeling it's going to pass the man of the state, which is a very strong endorsement. And that you will be able to go forward to other communities and say that Northampton has already voted approval. And, you know, you may have to explain why we do two readings to other people because that's a different story for a different time. But so you'll, you'll have that leverage, but at the same time, there, there are a lot of nuanced discussions about this. I, my first, I worked in outreach in nineteen seventy-two to farm workers who were working back in the main crop in this region at the time, which is tobacco. They were treated more, even more abhorrently than they are treated now in viciously substandard housing with company stores located on the farm. So that all script that was used was deducted from them so they could support themselves with food or, or anything. And then including alcohol, all located on the farms. And exposed to so many, basically every chemical that was applied is currently banned. And this has been an issue that's been the part of the warp and weave of this valley for so long, this hidden invisible network of workers who supported us that we were able to turn to blind eye, a blind eye to. I strongly support this. But at the same time, I think Counselor Jarrett has some legitimate questions. There's a lot of nuanced issues that are associated with this that I would feel more comfortable if he had an opportunity to be clear with those points. Rather than be perceived that we rushed this for the purposes of of making a statement that would seems we're all prepared to make anyway.
Counselor Jarrett.
Thank you, Counselor Dwight. Yeah, I do feel that those that that have, the importance of having those conversations, of giving my constituents time to, to hear that the first reading happened and, and give their thoughts. And I've received so far, you know, a very positive response from my constituents. The, I guess the question is, you know, often there's a note put on the agenda if there's a request for two readings to head. And when that note is there, I know I need to take the time to make sure that I'm ready for, for those two readings to do it. And because that's, that's the way we currently do our process and, you know, we may change that. And so, yeah, my request is, is to do a second reading on the twenty-first, if, if possible.
Counselor Mayori.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm hearing, I'm hearing my fellow counselors and I've just checked and it looks like we have two council meetings. So we have a buffer. If there was a huge natural disaster and we couldn't meet, but we still have another one. So I, if that's, you know, how you feel, I I'd be willing to not ask for two readings, although I should check in with the other co-sponsors.
Counselor Labarge already has her hand raised. So you're muted, Counselor Labarge.
I think why we were looking at doing two readings, Counselor Jarrett, is I think Counselor Mayori, when you had talked with one of the representatives, that there was a meeting coming up and he was very happy that we were putting this resolution together. And I, in my notes, I thought you had stated it was the eighteenth that this was that meeting was going to be held and he would have that resolution to be able to bring that forth and talk about it. Is that right?
Go ahead, Counselor Mayori.
Yes, that's correct. But it was moved, like a lot of time legislative hearings get moved. So it did get moved. So there's a little bit more time. Yeah.
Right. Thank you.
Sure.
Counselor Quinlan, did you want to respond to Counselor Mayori's request for the other sponsors' opinions?
Yeah, I'm totally comfortable doing one vote tonight and one in two weeks. I think we're, we're well under the the state house deadline there. And it, and it should give, give us a chance to have the conversation that Counselor Dwight was talking about. Thank you.
Counselor Labarge.
Yep. As long as I've been a counselor, I've seen so many second readings fly through this city council. So I'm very pleased about doing a second reading on this. And hopefully now, from now on, when resolutions come in, we have two readings instead of asking to suspend the rule.
Okay. Think it always just depends on circumstances sometimes, but it sounds like we have, we have time. Any other comments? I will just add my thanks to the sponsors of the resolution. Also, you know, my, my thanks to the sponsors, the state sponsors of the bills, who are some of our regional neighbors. You know, I, I, you know, so many people have spoken very beautifully about this tonight, so I'm not going to go on for long. But one thing I just wanted to point out is, you know, we know that the issue of wage theft for, is, is a huge issue for workers that have far more protections than wage, than farm workers have. So, so when you think about it in that context, like, you know, you can only imagine how much more vulnerable farm workers are to something like wage theft and to, you know, not receiving the full how their full low wages or, you know, whatever benefits that have been agreed upon for their, for their employment, that they're in an even more vulnerable position than some other workers. And we, we know what a huge issue that is for all workers. So I thank everyone for bringing this, for this, bringing this forward. And I agree that it seems like we will be all in agreement on trying to make sure it passes here and then on at the state. So thank you, everybody. Any other farting comments? Seeing none. And thank you so much, Claudia, for joining us. We appreciate. Laura, roll call please on a first reading.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading. And we will bring it up, take it up at the next meeting for a second reading. Thank you, everybody. Moving on, we have a re-presenting update. So we have a presentation from the city clerk Pamela Powers and we also have the city GIS coordinator James Thompson with us. Let me find everybody. Pamela, I don't, oh, there's James. Okay. And I don't see Pam. Does anyone see Pam? I mean, I see her in the list, but she's unmuted. Pam, are you there?
Just started my video. So hello, here I am.
Hello.
Hi.
Welcome. Welcome to you and James.
Very much.
Would you like to lead us off with this discussion?
Absolutely. Well, first, thanks to everybody for allowing me to speak at the city council meeting tonight. I don't want to take up too much of the council's time, but I did want to give you an update on where we are with our re-presenting project. As you recall, I reached out to the city council a while back to share some information about the need to re-precinct after the federal census in two thousand and twenty. That was the rollout for the new drawing of the new boundary lines was to take place in two thousand and twenty-one, which we are of course doing. I'm here tonight to share our progress of what the group has been working on together thus far. And just to remind you that the city council has to approve any final map. And just to remind you that the city council has to approve any final map that we come up with as a committee. Uh, and I, I have to say that I had planned for you to do a first reading tonight, but it turns out that, um, we presented our map to the state and they in turn need to define for us the, based on what our changes and our recommendations were, um, they need to provide back to us the block map and a description of the boundary lines for each ward and precinct. So we're not prepared to, to do that, to have you do that first reading tonight. So as a result of the federal census in 2020, the only reason why we are drawing, redrawing precinct lines is due to the population shifts and growths and some, uh, from one precinct to another. Um, and as a result of, um, the shifts, we were given the standards in which we must maintain for each of the new precinct and boundary lines that we developed. I, along with James, formed a working group, uh, consisting of Mike Stiles, Howard Moore, Bally Dwight, Mario Addis, Robbie Sullivan, Samantha Hopper, and David Stevens, some of whom are logged in tonight. And we took a look at a proposed map that the state had sent us and said, we told you what the standards are. We gave you all of the, the tools that, uh, might be necessary for, um, redrawing the lines. And this is a map that we think would work for you. And you have the option to sort of allow this to move forward, or you have the option to make some recommendations back to us and redefine your own lines. And so we chose the latter. And I think this, uh, what's up on the screen right now is, James, this is the map the state, uh, proposed to us?
Correct.
Okay. So as you can see, um, there, there are some big shifts in all of the wards and, uh, that, that we saw, and we knew that this was not, uh, good for North Hampton. So we looked at, for example, um, the terr- the geographical footprint for Ward Seven, uh, which was for, for formerly, uh, where it says seven B, it was formerly six B. And now would, would have become, uh, Ward Seven B. And, uh, some of the rationale that the group discussed included, for example, the distance between, um, some of the new, some of the new boundaries, uh, and where those residents would be voting. So for example, folks on the lower part of, uh, the, the left-hand lower part on West Hampton Road would be driving all the way to Lead School in order to, um, vote in any election that took place. So that seemed a little, uh, difficult, I think, for us to sort of accept. And there were other things that, that the group came up with. I think we developed a list of about 30 or 40 concerns and the committee worked very diligently to look at all of the concerns, uh, based on the makeup of neighborhoods, based on what we know to be the, uh, historic, the, the historic maps that we've been dealing with in 2010 and 2020, and tried to maintain the integrity of our historic maps as, as much as we possibly could. So knowing that the, the, um, the truth is that we have to live with this for 10 years. We even today continue to look at fine tuning all of those, uh, opportunities where people have identified that this, th- this is something that we feel could be, um, you know, could be better defined for North Hampton. So the hard truth here is that, you know, change is necessary and either we accept the, the, uh, huge shifts that we saw as proposed by the state, or we look at more modest shifts that the group recommended. We know, for example, another truth for us has to be that, um, Ward Two in particular is going to be reduced in size in terms of its footprint, its geographical footprint because of the, the higher density population within that ward. And we know that Ward Six and Seven are, are likely to grow in size. So those are some of the things that we sort of can tell just by looking at the data, the raw data that the state sent us about the, the, uh, population sizes since 2010. So that was the state map. The group met and discussed, as I mentioned, 30 or 40 different opportunities to improve what the state sent us. And James, is this the revised map that the group came up with?
Oh, this is the one that we initially chose on Monday.
Okay, so this map actually, uh, felt a little bit more like what we could live with. The, the changes here are not so drastic for some of the outlying wards and precincts. So for example, if you look at, um, James, can you go back to the first map where we saw, uh, the, the geographical footprint of Seven? The red outline for Seven goes all the way down, uh, to the bottom left-hand corner, uh, of the map. And as a result of the discussion that we had with some folks, um, James, if you could look at the, the Monday map, that would be great if you could put that up there. So this is what we felt, um, was a little bit more in line with what our, our, Ward Six footprint is today, right here. Um, now, some of the other changes that we saw since 2010 also impacted what the final outcome was going to be. For example, in 2010, the census blocks that were defined by the federal census were somewhere in the neighborhood of 745 blocks. And the blocks have no, uh, concrete definition. They can consist of zero people or I think as much as 702 people within North Hampton. I think that's our biggest block size. Um, and now in 2020, we now have 512 blocks. So that's probably, uh, a result of the better technology that's out there. But the reality is, is that even the shapes of those blocks, it wasn't like in 2010. They just combined these two blocks together and now we're calling it a different block in 2020. The entire shape of North Hampton in terms of the, the block boundaries, uh, had, was redefined in 2020. So it's impossible for us to maintain any, um, footprint similar to what it was in 2010. So this is the map that was put on the city council agenda. And we continued our discussions because, uh, we again wanted to make sure, since we're living with this for 10 years, that if we could potentially meet all of the needs or the concerns that were addressed by the group, then we wanted to be able to do that. And as a result, James, if you could put up the third map, this, this is the map that we feel, um, is most appropriate for city council to, to weigh in on. And the state will be sending us the block, uh, the blocks associated with these new boundaries and also the block descriptions. Um, and it's those block descriptions that are part of our city ordinance. And as a result of it being in our code book, it does, according to the city council rules, unless you determine otherwise, it will need to go to legislative matters and have two votes of the council. So our timeline is pretty condensed. I know that, um, our timeline and what the needs are at this point don't coincide with what the city council's schedule is for either the legislative matters meeting or the city council meetings. So I ask for your help tonight in terms of, you know, helping us to make sure that we meet that October 30th deadline, knowing that at this point, we're waiting on the, the final descriptions from the state. They do need to be reviewed by Solicitor Seawald before we send them to legislative matters or whatever you decide to do with them. And before you take two votes, um, and I get that final package together to send to the state. So I was wondering if anybody might have any questions at this point.
Um, and Pam, another thing I, I don't think you've mentioned is that your committee is planning on doing a public review, a public meeting on this next week, right on the 14th?
Yes. Um, we, we will be doing a public review. I mean, this is, you know, very high in the sky view of what the wards and precincts, uh, look like. We will have those boundary descriptions by the time we have a public review of them. And then people can look at where they live in particular and say, how does this affect me? You know, one of the things that we tried to keep in mind was, for example, existing neighborhoods. And when we moved some existing neighborhoods out of Ward Three into Ward Four, folks said, you know, Ward Four feels more like downtown. Some of the Ward Three areas are really, um, in tune with the, the Ward Three City Committee or Ward Committee. And if possible, we'd like to see those folks move back into Ward Three. So if you look at, for example, James, if you could focus on the Con Street area. Our initial map that we came up with, uh, had the Con Street area, um, right by the star. The star indicates that that is the location of, of voting. So Wards Three and Four vote at the senior center and that's the, the, um, location that we had initially put in Ward Four as a result of our first cut, um, when the map came in from the state. It was a concern. We felt, I think the group felt that, um, folks in that particular neighborhood really, uh, aligned themselves more with Ward Three than downtown North Hampton. So we worked hard at trying to redefine that particular boundary. We believe the state is going to accept this boundary. It seems kind of an odd shape. But it does, um, it, given the fact that we have, you know, come up with this particular shape, it does meet all of the other criteria for, um, being part of that ward and precinct, including keeping the average population, um, within 5% of all the other wards and precincts in the city. So that's just one particular area. So, you know, so when we meet, uh, next Thursday, that's the goal for us to hone in, for people to take a look at, ask questions. And really, I mean, I think at this point, you know, there has to be a compelling concern for us to, you know, sort of not move this map forward with city council.
Okay. Um, let me just sort of lay out the options for the council. Just as we talk about this, you can understand sort of where, what we have to work with. So as we just said, the re-presingtoning committee is going to have a public meeting next week on the 14th. We, today, we can refer this to legislative matters and have a special meeting of legislative matters on the 18th. I think, I think we have, we've determined there's a quorum for that. We could also waive that referral and suspend the rule and not refer it. And then it would be, regardless, it would come to council on the 21st. And so, and then with that, there are two options. Either on the 21st, we could take two readings because that's the only meeting we have left in the month. And as we've said, this has to be, go to the state at the end of the month. Um, or if we were just going to take one reading, we would need to have a special meeting of the council. So I just want to make, make sure we have the big picture there. Uh, Counselor Dwight.
So, uh, Pam, for, for all of our sake, the, the, once this, uh, map is, let's, let's presume that a map, the map is, uh, moved on to the legislature and approved by the council. It goes into effect before the next election. Is that true? And that, uh, the, the, anyone who, uh, would be subject to a precinct change would be voting in a different place? Um, is that the case?
So what, once it passes through us, it goes to the Secretary of the Commonwealth. And the deadline for the legislature to pass all of these changes is July of 2022.
Okay.
And so the next elections affiliated or that fall after that, that, uh, timeline would be state elections. So there wouldn't be a municipal election, but yes, for the, for those state elections, if there were changes towards in, uh, precinct polling locations, we have to do, we have to notify every resident affected. And they, at that September, uh, elections next year, people would be voting in those new locations uh, for the first time.
Okay. Yeah. And the more salient point though is that, so lest there be any confusion, it does not apply to the election that is looming before us in November, that you vote where you've always voted for, at least for the last 10 years.
Yes. I mean, one of the, you know, a- again, you know, u- unfortunately, change is inevitable. Okay. So one of the things I do want to highlight and, um, we did take a look at was where, um, elected officials, both candidates on the ballot and uh, current elected officials, where their residence locations are in, uh, relation to the newly drawn uh, wards and precincts, although it was not a determining factor, one iota about where we finalized on a boundary. We do know it does impact, uh, I believe, one school, two school committee members. So if those folks got elected at this November election, they would, they would, beginning next July, they would be serving, uh, they, they would be living in a different precinct than what they were elected for.
Counselor LaBarge.
It doesn't, it doesn't affect Counselor LaBarge.
You're muted, Counselor LaBarge. Counselor LaBarge, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Pam, anyways, question. When you're saying that this will affect two school committee positions, right? Is that correct, Pam?
To, to elected officials, yes. If they were elected on this coming November, this coming November.
For school committee position, right?
Correct.
Okay. So how do you straighten that out? If they're running for a position on one ward, what happens with that, that they're going to be moved? I don't get it.
Well, we're, a- again, you know, the, I mean, we had standards that we needed to maintain in order to draw our boundaries. And, you know, those are legal standards. In order to draw our boundaries and, you know, those are legal standards. You know, for the candidate, I mean, that's an inconvenience that the next time that they run.
Yeah.
They may need to run for a different ward.
Okay.
Than what they're running for in twenty twenty-one. But. You know, but the, the criteria that the, that the committee focused on. Were those legal requirements, and I can go through them if you would like.
No, that's fine.
Okay, but you know, certainly, um. You know, the, the, the whole uh idea about. You know, the approach that North Hampton took was not to sort of engage elected officials. Um, to sort of help define what those boundaries were because, you know, that's, that's just not prudent.
It is. Well, I have to say you're correct because it is what it is. And if it happens, it happens. It's got to be done. So, just like with Councilor Dwight, if you can recall, ten years ago, with Ryan Road. That was a disaster. People were so upset and everything. Now, looking at this, I'm going to get them all back again. You know, this is craziness. And now I'm going to gain probably, maybe, well, James. I had him go over the mapping with me today very closely. And knowing that I'm getting them all back again and all the side streets. And like I told you, Pam, I really feel that I'm going to need from the city a grant with a cart. So I'm going to have to go around because you're looking at a massive, massive movement here, massive. And, you know, same with up in Park Hill Road. Again, I'm adding on more homes, okay, more people, population. And s- same with seven B. I mean, they're going to be taking Sylvester Road. And I'm taking all of Ryan Road, and it's massive here, massive.
Yeah, yeah, uh, so I think this is the map from twenty-ten, James, that you have up here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so you can see, for example, um, six A, you know, the shift in six A is. It looks significant, um, but in reality, a lot of that territory that. Councilor LaBarge will be taking over from seven B has no population. So it's mostly geography. They are, they are uh blocks with zero population in them. Um, but, you know, for the, for the purpose of drawing a, a line, we had to sort of. You know, draw it somewhere, so.
Wait a minute, if you're saying six A and you're talking about Sylvester Road, correct?
I, I, I'm talking about that Ryan Road area.
Right.
To the left of, to the left, where the purple is in six A right now.
Right. That's Sylvester Road area. And when you're talking about um conservation or whatever. I think, James, we're looking at that area where we're bringing in seven B. Which is Sylvester Road and Conservation Area, and there is population on Sylvester Road. So she also will have a good amount of people too.
Right, if you, if you look at that star where uh, that star that's where in six A, Councilor LaBarge.
Yep.
That's the area that I was referring to.
Okay.
The purple area off of Ryan Road, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so a lot of that geography uh to the left of all those streets, Bruce Hill Avenue and that sort of thing. There, there are any houses or people there, so.
Right. I know all that area, but I thought you were talking about Sylvester Road. Because she is going to have a population there.
Yes, she will.
Yes. Well, that's all right because, you know, Councilor Mayory, we've got the Garter's um winery over there. So we could have, you know, a combination of seven B and six A and get togethers there. They're wonderful. Gina Louise, you know that one.
I sure do. Councilor Mayory, you want to speak to the, the winery you're gaining?
Yes, yes, we can, we, maybe we can, you know, thumb wrestle over the winery, but, no, um, I was just going to say that's the sawmill. Um, Conservation Area that, so I guess I, I'm not understanding, why would you? So, seven, uh, Ward Seven and Ward Six are the only two wards that grew. Geographically, uh, uh, in, in, uh, will, would grow in this map geographically. Why would you capture, um. Why would you, why would you capture um area that doesn't have population? But you need the population to, to be part of the equation to fix the.
So, so the sta- the standard is population, right? So the standard is. Plus or minus five percent of whatever the average population is for the city.
Right.
So, so, um, some of those uh boundaries. Uh, include blocks that the census drew that have no population whatsoever. Yeah, so, so when, when we looked at, for example, I mean, mo- a majority of your residents. It, it, in that Sylvester Hill area are, you know, more to the top part of that map. As opposed to down by Sylvester Road, but we, but in order to get your population average bumped up to where it needed to be. We needed to include all the geo- surrounding geography because it needed to be continuous and contiguous. Yeah, areas, so. We, we couldn't have you having, you know, part of your ward here and part of it there and, yeah, so.
Got it, of course. Thank you for explaining that. And I just wanted to say, I, when I looked at this. It is a, a big difference, but it did make, does make sense to me. Um, I love my Ryan Road. Um, constituents, but they, they have, they, you know, they do talk about having to drive so far uh to go vote and. Um, so I think you've done a great job and it makes sense to me the way, I, I can, I can understand. How, you know, your kind of, your thought process uh about what, about maintaining neighborhoods and such, so I appreciate that.
Especially those residents on Ryan Road or off of Ryan Road, I should say, that have to drive by three polling locations. In order to get to their polling location in Ward Seven. Um, it, it, you know, it's hard to explain that continuous and contiguous. Uh, footprint is what's driving that and not. You know, the roads per se, um, and the, the road, the route that you need to take. In order to get your polling location. Because certainly, if we could have a polling location at the winery, I mean.
No, I just.
I, I could pursue that.
Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Council President. Um, so, uh, first of all, a, a big thank you to the work group. I did listen in on those discussions. They wo- worked really hard. It was a really great group. I want to put a special thank you out to Howard Moore, who uh was in there uh fighting for all of. Ward free turf that he could keep and also was really helpful. Uh, weighing in on, I, I noticed he was part of some discussion in the thread having to do with. Uh, Lathrop out on uh, in, in Ward One and uh, that he, he was, he was being very equitable. Um, I, I want to thank James and, and Pam for all of the work that they've done on this. Um, that it, I think we need to acknowledge what's, what's happened here. It's the delay with doing the census. And getting the actual figures to the state to get the numbers out to. Cities like us to figure out reprecincting that has us so under the gun right now. This is really. Um, this is kind of unprecedented that, um, that we're, you know, that. We're basically taking the recommendations from the s- the state and just running with it. And rather than having the option of like taking a more deep, um, thoughtful approach to it over a few months' time. And which is what occurred in the past. So, um, and so what we have before us is. Something we, you know, I, I think we need to trust that the work group has done good work here. And that, um, and that we need to send it forward, um, you know, through the vetting process. Pam's having her meeting uh next week. Um, I, I, I think it should definitely go to legislative matters. Um, mainly because Pam may hear things next week that, to her and James further want to tweak. And then, um, and then, you know, legislators matters will do its work on solidifying all the, the legislation. Before it comes to us on the twenty-first for two readings. Um, but that's, that's the approach I, I would like to see it go through. But I, I, I can say as the Ward Three counselor, looking at the, the changes here, there's some hard changes for. Um, uh, and, and for many uh people, e- especially in the downtown area that they're. They're, they're moving from one precinct, one ward to the next and, uh, so. It's with regret that I'm backing this process, uh, but I think, uh, we, you know. Uh, Pam has pulled together, she pulled together a great team and, and I think this is um, something we need to move forward with.
Um, councilors, I see you. Pam, let me just ask for a quick clarification though, based on what Councilor Nash just said. Uh, how, how much flexibility is there, it, you know, for you to be able to? Once you've sent, you know, you, you've sent it to the state, right? Um, would you then have to send it to the state again for updated language? So.
Yes.
Okay, so can you explain that a little bit and explain really what could be done from this point forward?
Right, so, I, I, I mean, I, you know, the committee, the committee sort of, um. Recognize that there were a lot of difficult uh decisions that we had to make. There were some things that we just couldn't do. You know, and so, the, the reality again is that there are going to be some difficult changes. Um, and it's not really, uh, anything, there's not really anything that anybody can do about it. Um, you know, for, just, just as an example, the hardest, I think, decision for the entire city. Has to be Ward Two. And the reason for that is because. It's growing, it's, it's shrinking in size. Um, and, and it affects a lot of people, you know, who live uh i- in. You know, over by the high school and, you know, those folks have aligned themselves a great deal, you know, with. Ward Two initiatives. And not that they couldn't align with other initiatives. But I, I see that as a cohesive, you know, neighborhood over there and it's. Unfortunate that we had to draw a line. Again, that, you know, sort of met those standards and, and whether it was that side of, of Ward Two. Or this side of Ward Two, it was going to happen. So, you know, it, it's just unfortunate. Um, so yes, we, we can be somewhat flexible, but the argument really does need to be compelling. For us to sort of go to the drawing board again. Um, something that the committee really just overlooked or, you know, didn't think through enough. But I can tell you, you know, in the discussions that we had, I mean. We heard everybody until, you know, they, they said all that they wanted to say. And even, you know, even when folks couldn't make the first meeting, we heard them on the second meeting. And then we continued to, you know, to work through their ideas and their, you know, their thought processes. Until we could, you know, sort of come up with an agreed upon plan for the entire city. Um, so yeah, there is, there is some level of flexibility and everything is, is. Oh, you, you know, liquid until you guys actually say, this is the solid, this is what we're going with. This is what we're going to live with. Um, the, the, you know, in the past, that might have been less possible. Because we were coming up with the language, but what we're feeding to the state are the blocks. And they're coming back with the language around what the territory uh boundaries are. And we're filling in the blanks, for example, um, uh, you know, I could. You know, share with you some of the, you know, some of the. Verbiage about, you know, what those descriptions are and, you know, we're filling in the blanks. To identify a geographical marker for everything that's a non-visible or um, a street. Or, excuse me, a path that's not defined or a stream or river that's not defined by the state's software. And, you know, for the seven precincts that James and I went through. Uh, over the past couple of days, um, it took us about eight hours to go through those eight man-hours. Between, you know, the two of us sort of sitting there, um, working on this until, you know, literally. We, we said, we got to stop, so, um. You know, so we're, I, I'm willing to continue to do that, but every time we come back with a, you know, with. It's like one of those, um, you know, pop-it things where you bang, you know, you bang the gavel on one head to get it down. And another one pops up in another area. It's, it's a balancing act. So if we make a change somewhere here. It changes some, you know, something else over here and we, every component affiliated with both of those parts. Needs to be um nailed down before we bring it to the state as our final um. Y- y- boundary and map, so, yeah.
Thank you for that. Um, the, the chair of the committee is actually here. Can we get, quickly get a motion to recognize Dave Stevens?
Motion to recognize Dave Stevens?
I was going to be by Councilor Quinlan, seconded by Councilor LaBarge. Discussion, roll call please on recognizing. Mr. Stevens. You're muted, Laura.
Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Mayory.
Yes.
Councilor Nash.
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councilor Shara.
Yes.
Councilor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councilor Dwight.
Yes.
And Councilor Foster.
Yes.
Welcome, Dave. This is, um, you, you should be able to unmute. Can you unmute? It, I'm asking you to unmute. Wait, what happened? Can you all hear me? Okay. Um, hold on, my view just changed. Hold on one sec. Why can't you? Uh-oh.
How's that?
Yes, yes. Hi, welcome. This is, um, is this your third time?
Third time playing in the reprecincting area. This is the, the third time with James, who is phenomenal, by the way. You guys should all recognize that. That James is the, the G, GIS guy who just makes his job very, very simple. And the first time working with Pam on this directly and Pam did a phenomenal job of just keeping all the ducks in a row. As, as did the other uh six members of this committee. They worked very hard.
Thank you. Um, did, did you have anything else you wanted to sort of add to where we are in this process or?
Yeah, I hate the fact that it's, it's rushed, but we don't have control of that as, as Jim pointed out. Because um, of the way the, the, the things fell, the timeline fell, we have to have this done. If we don't have it done by the end of the month. That map that James showed early on, that really messes with the original intent of the neighborhoods. And trying to do as little um, uh, damage or, or problem, create as few problems as possible. Try to keep people within the existing wards, keep them with their existing city councils and, and um, uh, school committee people. The state map will take over and that really did mess with precincts. So we have a deadline and we just have to make sure that we uh do whatever is necessary. Pam and, and James are really on top of this, so I'm um, actually breathing a sigh of relief. That I don't have to do too much other than look pretty, but the, the committee is, has done the work. We've made the recommendations. And I, I'm firmly convinced that this is the best we could do, given um, the. Three weeks we had as a committee to, to go over the material. Uh, I'm looking forward to city input at the public hearing next week. Uh, to see if there's any other tweaks we, that could be made, but um, the whack-a-mole analogy that Pam came up with. Um, is, 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 is relevant because you move one block and remember you have to do it by blocks. Uh, you move one block in one precinct, you have to change another block in another precinct. So it, it really starts to skew the map very quickly. And that chart that James put up during the presentation. You have to be within five percent. So everybody has to average within five percent of what that. So everybody has to average within 5% of what that average is, and it's important that we, we respect that or that's another reason that they can reject our, our work and force us to take the state map. So that's all I wanted to get in there is, I wish it was different, I wish we had more time, I wish we could consider every option. But at this point in time, the clock is ticking and we gotta move fast.
Thank you for that. Councilors, I know I, I saw some hands. Okay, Counselor Quinlan and Counselor Labarge.
Well, thank you. Well, first, I would just echo Counselor Nash's thanks to, to our city clerk, our soon-to-be-appointed city clerk, and James Thompson from Planning and Sustainability, and the seven community members being part of this discussion. Thank you all very much. I, I just wanted to mention that I think there's a provision in the Charter around elected officials by ward that if they were to move, they would serve that, finish that term in that ward. And so I just wanted to mention that as part of this discussion, that, that it is highlighted in the Charter that this, that, that there is a provision for this sort of thing. You know, so it's not like the city hadn't thought of this possibility at some point, whether it was the person's choice to move or maybe you'd be like me and you live in Ward One today, but next July you're gonna live in Ward Seven. Lathrop and I, we're, we're neighbors over here, we're all moving to Ward Seven without having to pack our houses up. So, that's pretty cool. I would also just also mention that I listened into a couple of meetings as well and just thought that the, the whack-a-mole thing, the 3D chess, you know, seismic shifts are felt across the board, right, when you move one thing. And I'm really grateful because I, I, I recognize what, what the Chair just said about this, that, that the state's map really had much more disruption than, than what these folks have come up with here at the end with, with their diligence. So I'm grateful for that effort. You know, again, lamenting the fact that, that this is a rushed process, but, but absolutely think that the decisions made here, while, while not all easy, are, are also essential.
Thank you. Counselor Labarge.
Thank you. I want to thank David Stevens, who was the Chair. I think, David, this is, what, your second time doing the re, five, four?
Third, third.
Time? Oh my God. Okay. Anyways, it's a lot of work. And especially James, I, I don't know what we do without him. He's unbelievable, very helpful. And Pam, thank you for all this extra time. And David Stevens is absolutely correct. I mean, we have a time limit, we're being rushed. And I think with all this extra time and James spending it with the mapping and so forth, I'm just gonna thank the whole group. It's a lot of work, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, councilors, we have, we have some decisions we have to make right now. They're not as hard as the decisions this excellent committee's had to make, but we have to make some right now. So, if there's no further discussion, we, do you all remember the, sort of the options? We can waive referral, and it'll just come to the council on the 21st. We can refer to Legislative Matters, and then Legislative Matters will have a special meeting for that meeting, because we've already met for this month. So that is, that, that's our first decision point we have to make. Counselor Quinlan.
Is, uh, well then, may I make a motion to refer this to Legislative Matters?
And I'm in a second.
Then I do.
Motion is made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor Labarge. Discussion. Um, since we have all members of Legislative Matters here, Laura, who was, who had you not yet heard from?
Counselor Thorpe was the only one I hadn't heard from, if you were available for October 18th, the special meeting.
I'm good.
Any, any further discussion on referring this to Legislative Matters for a special meeting on October 18th? Okay, Counselor Foster, then Counselor Jarrett.
So, there will be opportunity for public input next week. I guess my question regarding referral to Legislative Matters is if there is going to be technical information in the, in the ordinance that would need to be reviewed by Legislative Matters? Or would the point of referral be another opportunity for kind of greater input?
That, I mean, so it would be the language that's come back from the state. So it would really, you know, I'm, I'm open to other people's interpretations of this, but I would think it's more about another opportunity for public input. I mean, as we've heard, there's, there's limited possibility to change it at that point because it would then have to go back for revising that language again, and we'll, we'll be very short on time then. Pam, would you agree with that assessment?
Well, I think, just wanted to say, I don't think the map is in the ordinance book. Right? So it's just the description of the boundaries. I think that at one point they needed to live somewhere. And so it will be the technical definitions of what those boundaries lines are that are part of the ordinance that is going to Legislative Matters. And it will be based on, you know, the, the, the final map that the group puts together. So if, it's your interpretation of if you want those to live hand in hand, but the map itself would, when I write it, it won't be part of the ordinance. What, you know what I'm saying? Like, that's just not in the ordinance book, so.
Counselor Foster, did that? Help?
Yeah, I'm, I'm freezing, I think, a little bit, but, um, yeah, that's, so I guess I, I would appreciate a refer, referral to Legislative Matters just to have that language looked at, but now it's, it's very clear to me why, so, thank you.
Okay. I thought I said, yes, Counselor Jarrett.
I'm just, just so I'm clear about that, that we will have the language, Legislative Matters will have the language from the state, and they will review that. But if they want to make any changes, that will have to go to the state again, that will delay the time. Is that correct?
Pam? Am I, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so, so we'll have that public discussion on the 14th. And then the goal is for us to, you know, quickly turn that around to the state for them to, you know, give us back the, the legal descriptions. And again, when those legal descriptions come back, they, they come back with a lot of holes in them. So it's gonna be up to James and I to fill in those gaps because they won't take, you know, I would say there's probably, for each ward and precinct, there's probably 10 areas that need to be defined by a boundary marker that has yet to be determined. And so it's those kinds of things that you'll be looking at. You know, and depending, I think, on James and myself in terms of making sure that whatever we define is clear. But honestly, you know, if, if, there's no reason why the boundary lines need to live in the ordinance book, except I think the ordinance book was a great placeholder for it. So by definition, by the council, you know, standards, you're required to have it go to Legislative Matters. So, you know, I mean, but, but at that particular point in time, you know, there, this, I mean, it's, if you looked, if you printed out the precinct lines now or the boundary descriptions, there's 14 pages of descriptions coming out of the ordinance book. So that's what you'll be looking at, sort of, you know, to try and, and you know, get that finalized on the 18th.
Um, Pam, with that in mind, so if the 14th to the 18th, is that realistically enough time for you and James to do that filling in that needs to be done? Because that's, you know, so that's the evening of the 14th, so that really just gives you.
Wow.
Right, so we, I, I, I mean, James and I have talked about it. We do think it's realistic because we've already started working on those wards and precincts where, you know, defining the boundaries for a majority of, you know, it's not like these things are gonna shift now by any great degree. If we move only one boundary, then only one section of that language is gonna need to be revised. You know, so, yeah, we do think it's doable. It's a stretch, but, you know, it is what it is, so, yeah, we'll make it happen.
Okay, Counselor Dwight.
So for everyone's reference point, the descriptors that Pam is talking about, they look very much the way we draft parking ordinances, for instance. It's, it's, it doesn't say, we're gonna put a space in front of the synagogue. It says, it talks from 500 feet south of such-and-such point to so on. So it's, it's, to look at it, your, your brain will fry. As we know, that the, the, the way the current precincts are divided now, well, you, you, they're down the middle of a street, they're down middle of streets, which is why Counselor Quinlan lives on Ward One and control Rock into Ward Three pretty easily. And for people to consequently throw rocks at him, but we're not encouraging that. What I'm suggesting is, of course, that what we will be dealing with in, we'll be referring to the map because the map is an accompanying piece that clarifies it for us. And just as when we're handed these parking ordinances, we get a map so that we actually know what the hell we're talking about, because if we look at the words, we wouldn't know what it meant. And, and I think that's the tricky thing that Pam and James have to deal with if the, if people are thinking about significant changes or proposing significant changes. So what we should understand is by the time it gets to Legislative Matters, this is mostly a done deal. It's an opportunity for the public to weigh in on the concerns, and if a concern reaches a certain threshold, then it should be addressed. But the fact is, is that we're not, we're not tinkering at this point. We are basically deciding whether this is good enough for us to move on and that we can be okay with it, which is always the case, as David Wolf, as the Chair will testify. This man who's not only done this three times, but also Charter review a couple of times as well. I don't understand what prescription you have that allows you to do this, but I'm, I'm deeply admirable of your, your abilities and your devotion to this community. So, but that's what I, I, I think what's gonna, so just so everyone knows, when we go before Legislative Matters, the conversation is not going, I don't think it's, it's not gonna be broad strokes, it will be just tiny granular discussions if there are real, real conflicts that we can identify that maybe we might need to change.
Counselor Jarrett.
Uh, one more question. What time is that Legislative Matters meeting?
Have we determined that? I was discussing with Counselor Nash to how long this Community Resources is meeting before that. Did, I think we decided, I know it would be safe starting at seven, possibly even six thirty, the time was a little up in the air. 6:30? Counselor Nash, is that realistic, that Community Resources?
It's realistic.
Great, yeah, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a conflict with Community Resources, so thank you.
Counselor Mayori.
But we actually haven't decided that we're sending it to Legislative Matters.
Well, it's, it's on the floor.
Right, but we were, I, I, I guess I'm finding the conversation confusing because we're saying "we", and I don't know if we're referring to "we" at Legislative Matters or "we" at Council. And I'm trying to kind of decide if, if having Legislative Matters is at some burden and not much gain or if it's, you know, a helpful part of the process, and I'm, I guess I'm not really clear on that. Especially if all the other councilors are participate in.
I, I do want to point out that you are definitely relying very heavily on James and myself for this language, and, you know, I mean, I, I can't, I, I don't want to bypass Legislative Matters because I think the committee does excellent work, and this is an important part of, you know, getting it through, getting this through City Council. And we shouldn't bypass that, but I really, you know, can't emphasize enough that, you know, when you look at these wards, you know, and precincts, I can honestly tell you that unless you're willing to dedicate, you know, a full eight hours to go through all of the descriptors in the, the, the code book, you definitely can't be relying on what James and I ultimately pull together in terms of the language. So I don't know if that's helpful or not.
It's a little bit of a mixed message, but Counselor Dwight.
This, um, this is to the motion, and, and I take Counselor Mayori's point. I mean, since the fact is, one, Pam has successfully identified the fact that this is not, I mean, we only do it by ordinance as, as pro forma for, for hand. It's not required. But keeping it in the book of ordinance seems to be appropriate place. But that is why we're pushing it to Legislative Matters, but at the same time, Counselor Mayori makes a good point that we would have to identify it as a full council meeting anyway in order to abide by open meeting laws because it's likely all the councils will show up. I, I'm perfectly comfortable with keeping it back in the council without, in bypassing Legislative Matters. It's just, you know, I, I, I agree with the motion and I'd be perfectly fine with having this special meeting. Given the time constraints, given the lack of flexibility that's available to us, I don't know if we've actually approved matters or just make things more complicated. If we do it in Legislative Matters, we, I would have no problem if we had this conversation in full council as a public meeting with access, it means not a hearing as such, so it would be a little trickier. Public comment, we would have to open up the public's opportunity to speak, I think, in the course of that, but I, I, so, I'm not helping, I recognize, but I think at the same time, it's worth, I mean, given, given our constraints, it may expedite matters if we do meet as the full council.
Counselor Labarge. Yes, um, thank you, Counselor Dwight. I think Pam really brought forth some interesting questions here. She's having the meeting on October 14th. What time is that meeting, Pam?
I'm planning it for seven.
At seven o'clock, and you pretty well explained the whole process and so forth. I feel myself that should not have to come to Legislative Matters. We can do the two readings on the 21st. Right now, hearing what the Chair David Stevens had stated, the importance here of making sure that this is done, we vote on it and move it out to the state. Time is the best thing here, and I really feel, why do we have to bring it to Legislative Matters? We don't have to. We can bring it right to City Council, have that open public session or hearing, debate on it, whatever, whatever you want to do, and do the two readings and move it on.
Okay, so that's the motion that's on the floor to refer to Legislative Matters. Any further comments on that motion? All right, seeing none, roll call please, Laura. Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
No.
Counselor.
Excuse me, I thought we were just voting. What are we voting on here?
This is about the referral to Legislative Matters.
A referral to, okay, I thought we were saying the opposite.
No, what's on the floor is a referral to Legislative Matters.
Okay, I did not pick that up. I'm sorry. So I want to change my vote on that because I want to say no.
Okay, duly noted. Counselor Nash? You're muted, Counselor Nash.
Sorry about that. Yes.
Okay, Counselor Quinlan.
No.
Counselor Shara, no. Counselor Thorpe.
No.
No.
Counselor Dwight?
Nope.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett?
No.
Not going to Legislative Matters, am I correct?
Right, it failed seven to two.
Okay, so this is gonna go directly to the council on the twenty first. Um, and I would. You know, we'll put on the agenda two readings, but I would like to quickly have a conversation with the council. If we're not gonna be comfortable doing two readings on that, I wanna make sure that we secure a date for a special meeting. So I'd like to get a sense from the council, um, since as we know, we have a hard deadline on this. Um, whether that's something the council would be comfortable with to have two readings on the twenty first. Counselor Foster, Counselor Jarrett, Counselor Dwight.
Without it, I, I, my crystal ball tells me yes, given what we've seen and that there will be um, public process next week. Um, so my guess is yes, although I certainly couldn't guarantee.
Counselor Jarrett?
Similar, unless there's some really unusual uh, thing that comes up within this wording or, and you know. I would, I would be comfortable with that.
Okay, Counselor Dwight?
Uh, they spoke my mind, I agree.
Okay, so since this is a squishy yes I'm hearing, um. I just want, because as we know, like we, we will have to do this if we're gonna do another reading. Um. Tuesday, the twenty sixth, can people be available? Does that give us enough? That would, that would give us enough time to post it, Laura, right? Yeah.
Yes.
I have an, I have an issue that day, Counselor.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, anyone else have? Can ev- all other counselors be available the twenty sixth? Counselor Dwight? I can't, you're muted.
I'm saying yes, I'm available. I would see, I thought you were asking us to raise our hands and then.
Oh, sorry.
October twenty sixth, there's a meeting of the City Council Rules Committee at six P M. Just so it'd have to be after that.
Or before.
Or before. Yep, yep. Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Quinlan?
Pardon me, my, my commitment is from five thirty to six thirty, so I could be available around that. Sorry.
What day are we looking at?
Tuesday, the twenty sixth.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sensing we could figure out a quorum for the twenty sixth. Yes, okay, that's gonna be, so hold that date, everybody.
Okay.
Um, and if we need, that's what we're gonna use. Okay.
What's the time on that again, please?
We not, haven't really determined it. Um, either five, is that right? Before rules or after rules? Yeah?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, everybody, thank you. Thank you for that discussion. Thank you so much, Pam, James, Dave Stevens. Everyone on that committee, you've done amazing, hard, long work. Um, and I'm sure you'll be glad when this month wraps up and you just get to send it off. Um, all right, thank you so much for joining us. Um, okay, we're on to the consent agenda. I am going to read the items and then ask for removals. Um. Uh, Laura, you sent the minutes, right?
Yes, I did. And they're, they're uploaded now to the agenda.
Oh, I must have had the one before that. Does everyone feel comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have the minutes of the twenty second of September. Um, then there's twenty one point three two four, Appointment of Pamela Powers as City Clerk. This received a positive recommendation from City Services on um, the fourth of October. Twenty one point three two seven, Appointment of, to the Council on Aging, A Positive Recommendation from City Services. This is Carolyn Sandel. Uh, one thirty two Chesterfield Road, Terms October twenty twenty one to June twenty twenty fourth to fill a vacancy. Twenty one point three four one, An Appointment to the Arts Council. This is for referral to City Services. Um, me or my, Bell, Bellitsky, twenty LaSalle Avenue. Term October twenty one, June twenty twenty fourth to fill a vacancy. And that is the consent agenda. I am going to ask, uh, please for the removal of the Appointment of Pamela Powers as City Clerk. Um.
Move, move consent agenda, uh, minus uh, Pamela Powers.
Second that.
Okay, most, I mean, seconded on the consent agenda. Roll call please, Laura, on the consent agenda, minus that removal.
Councilor Mayori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
And Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Okay, extension to passes. Someone move the remaining item?
I would like to move the Appointment of Pamela Powers, please.
Second.
Mostly by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Foster. I'm just, as I previously disco- disclosed, Pamela Powers has contributed to my campaign. That doesn't exclude me from voting on this appointment, but as this is a paid city appointment, I'm going to choose to abstain from this vote. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor, gosh, Shara has abstained or refused. Uh, Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
And Counselor Mayori?
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations. On that appointment. Um, moving on. We are gonna recess for finance. Laura, will you please call the roll?
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Here.
Counselor Shara?
Here.
And Counselor Thorpe?
Here.
Uh, first item is the approval of the minutes from September twenty second. Um.
Move to approve the minutes.
Received by Counselor Quinlan, was there a second?
Yes, I said first.
Okay, so sorry. Received by Counselor LaBarge, seconded by Counselor Quinlan. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing then, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Okay, we are at twenty one point three two nine, In Order Authorizing Gift Acceptance and Expenditure. On Academy of Music Restroom Expansion and Recommendation Upon the Recommendation of the Mayor. Order that the North Hampton City Council accepts a donation of thirty nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and thirty one cents. From the North Hampton Academy of Music, Inc., and in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter forty four, Section fifty three A. Approves Using the Gifted Funds for the Expansion and Renovation Academy of Music Restroom Facilities Project.
Move a positive recommendation to the full City Council. Second.
Received by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Um, hello, Mayor Narkowitz.
Hi, um, this is a project that we've talked about at several previous meetings. This is the uh, historic renovations to the um, to the restrooms uh, in the academy. Um, they run into some additional costs that the academy would like to cover itself. Um, and so because it's a city contracted project. Um, we have to first accept the money as a gift uh, in order for it to be authorized to be spent toward the project. So this is essentially accepting a payment toward this project from the Academy of Music.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing then, roll call please, Laura, and a positive recommendation.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with positive recommendation, and we're at twenty one point three three zero. In Order to Authorize Payment of Prior Years, Prior Year Bills to Amoresco. This is upon the recommendation of the mayor. The council authorized payment of prior fiscal year bills FY twenty twenty one for the following Amoresco invoices for net metering credits. Associated with the Glendale Road Solar Array Lease and Power Purchasing Agreement. Funds which are ultimately credited back to the city utility accounts by National Grid resulting in lower energy costs. So November four, twenty twenty, eight thousand seventy two dollars, seventy cents, December second, twenty twenty, seven thousand one hundred and forty five dollars and forty cents. January fifth, twenty twenty one, four thousand seven hundred and fifty seven dollars, eighty one cents, February third, twenty twenty one, four thousand nine hundred and sixty seven dollars and twenty six cents.
Move, move to um, City Council on full recommendation.
Received by Counselor Quinlan, mayor Narkowitz, this is nice.
So these are four bills um, that occurred during the last fiscal year. So in order to pay them um, in a future fiscal year, it does require a vote of council. Um, we're unclear why these four bills, all the bills prior and all the bills after. Um, we're unclear whether invoices were not sent. Um, and even as we trued up the books at the end of the fiscal year, Amoresco indicated that we were uh, fully caught up. But these were discovered afterwards, so this is just paying bills that um, that were owed to Amoresco uh, in fiscal year. To twenty twenty one, and so it's again required by Mass General Law that the council vote to approve those payments. Money that was already budgeted and, and just needs to be expended now in a future fiscal year.
Okay, Counselor LaBarge?
Yes, so mayor, I mean, who is responsible for making sure that these bills were paid?
Um, the bills, um, all of the various energy bills get sent to um, central services. Uh, for all of the various utility accounts, uh, you know, gas, electricity. Um, and all of these various solar credits um, that we uh, monitor and maintain. Um, and so generally we get billed and um, and invoices are paid. Um, it's unclear whether, why we didn't get invoices for these four months. Um, and um, but again, we're, we're wanting to go back and make sure that they're paid. So um, uh, again, Amoresco, even as late as June. Um, said we had no outstanding uh, invoices, and then we discovered them um, upon closer review. So um, so we wanna make sure we're paid in full.
Thank you. So we're gonna owe them what? A total of, what about twenty, almost twenty five thousand, twenty four thousand nine hundred and forty, forty three dollars?
That's correct, yes, and um, it's a little confusing to people. Um, you know, we leased uh, the landfill. Uh, for the construction of a solar array. Um, and in these types of lease arrangements, um, including people who, you know, lease their own system on their house. Or, or buy into community solar, uh, the way that the energy savings happen is, um, you know, the, the. Uh, you know, there's a, you get credited on your energy bill uh, for the solar credits. Um, and then you, um, and then you sort of make a payment to the leaseholder. Um, and the net of those two are actually, are the savings that you realize on your, um, on your energy bill. You're not getting the full, um, you know, you're not getting the full savings if you own the system outright, um, but that's the way it works. And so, um, you know, I, our family doesn't have solar on our roof, but we belong to a community solar. Um, and so we pay a bill uh, to a different company, and then we get a credit and then, but the offset is that we're saving. So it's, yeah, it's a little odd that we're paying them, um, but that's why we make these payments.
Mayor, also on Glendale Road with the solar array there. I don't have the budget, budget book in front of me, but. How much did we actually save in the city, which was a tremendous amount of money here? Like three hundred and something thousand, which paid for all the buildings of electricity in the city. It was like three hundred and something.
Yeah, it was, it was significant, and we, uh, you know, we, we, and the way it works, uh, you know, with a, you know. Again, similar to like a, you know, a community solar arrangement, you know, we assign. Um, you know, we assign the, the solar to different buildings and different bill, basically different bills from different buildings. So yeah, we were able to, you know, significantly reduce our energy bill, and we assigned them to a lot of our city schools, as well as some municipal buildings. Um, so it was a significant savings um, to us. And again, those all, those credits all show up on individual uh, National Grid bills. For different um, facilities that we assign them to. Um, and, and so that's how it plays out. But yes, it, it, it has, was and continues to be uh, an important source of savings. You know, as well as, as well as, you know, obviously promoting our goal of, of renewable energy um, as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Quinlan?
Thank you. Uh, I thank you, mayor, for this. I just wanted to check with you, just to make sure we under, that I understood uh, in the terms of the budget. So everything was zeroed out June thirtieth, so where is this, it doesn't say it anywhere, where is this money coming out of?
So this money is coming out of our energy line item. Um, and so, you know, this would be, you know, we're, we're paying this out of our energy line item, and then it gets offset on the bill. Um, you know, the savings gets offset on the bill, and this just sort of continues continuously. Um, you know, for the, for the period that the solar array is in place, you know, twenty, I think twenty plus years, maybe more. Um, so that's, that's how we're, uh, you know, and the, the funds that weren't expended uh, last year. Uh, would flow, would basically flow to free cash like any other unexpended fund, so they do come back to the city, back into the general fund. Um, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so it, so, I mean, just because these bills are now coming out of this year's budget, but they weren't budgeted in this year. Would we expect to be asked to increase that line item later, maybe if, if we get into a situation where we're paying this year's bills? Uh, because we've kind of accounted for that money.
Yeah, I don't believe we'll have an issue because generally, these are such fluid accounts, and there's generally. It's impossible to land them exactly, so um, there's generally some um, additional funds that flow to free cash every year. So we think it will not have a major impact on this line item, which, you know, as you can imagine, our utility line item is quite large. Um, you know, for, for our electric, you know, line item is quite large, so this twenty thousand would represent, you know, fairly, um. Not a, not a huge percentage of it.
Great, thanks for explaining that.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call please, Laura, on a positive recommendation.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward. Um, and we're at twenty one point three three two. In Order to Appropriate FY twenty twenty two CPA Funds for Community Preservation Purposes. This is upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, order that the following amounts be appropriated, reserved from fiscal year twenty twenty two. Community Preservation Fund Estimated Revenues, two million seventy five thousand four hundred and sixty five dollars. One million four hundred and eighty five, four hundred and eighty two thousand four hundred and seventy five dollars are the FY twenty two local assessment estimate. Plus five hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars estimated state match for fiscal year twenty twenty two, Community Preservation Purposes. Uh, two hundred and twenty eight thousand three hundred and one dollars from the, from the total estimated CPA review to the Community Preservation Fund Open Space Reserve. Two hundred and twenty eight thousand three hundred and one dollars from the total estimated CPA review to the Community Preservation Fund Historic Preservation Reserve. Two hundred and twenty eight thousand three hundred and one dollars to the Community Preservation Fund Affordable Housing Reserve, seventy five thousand. To the um, administrative account and uh, one million three hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and sixty two dollars. From the total estimated CPA review to the Community Preservation Fund Budgeted Reserve. Also, the following amounts be appropriated from Community Preservation Fund Budgeted Reserve. For the FY twenty one Community Preservation Bonding Repayment Purposes, that's sixty thousand for principal. And six thousand seventy five dollars for interest for the Bean Farm Bond. Ninety thousand for principal, sixteen thousand two hundred for interest for the Florence Fields Bond. And sixty five thousand for principal and twelve thousand eight hundred for interest for Plasky Park two, stage two bond.
Move with a positive recommendation to full City Council.
Second.
Received by Counselor Thorpe. I see Sarah LaValley, who is here. And should be able to unmute. Can you? Yeah? Sarah?
All right, uh, my connection's not great, so apologize. Excuse me, uh, but this is an annual uh, activity that the City Council goes through. So this is basically putting all of the Community Preservation Act revenue. Both the, the local surcharge of three percent and the state match, which has gone up considerably. Into the appropriate accounts that it needs to go into. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
You just said the state match has gone up considerably?
Yeah, the, um, due to the Act to Sustain Community Preservation, which. Yeah, the, due to the Act to Sustain Community Preservation, which changed the formula for creating the state match and instituted additional fees at the Registry of Deeds, we're able to see almost a forty-five percent match estimated for this year.
That's great. Questions, comments for Sarah? Councillors? Um, did we put this on the floor?
Yes.
We did, thank you. All right, if there is, are no comments, then roll call please Laura on a positive recommendation.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councilor Shara.
Yes.
And Councilor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with the positive recommendation. Thank you, Sarah. Um, and we are at twenty-one point three, three, three. In order to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars in CPA funds to Hampshire and Hampton Canal Historical Documentation Project. This is upon the recommendation of Community Preservation Committee, ordered that, whereas the Office of Planning Sustainability submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for documentation and preservation of the Hampshire and Hampton portions of the New Haven and Northampton Canal. Whereas the canal is a significant historical and cultural resource of which most portions have been lost. The project will increase knowledge of the canal and related resources and help to inform future preservation and placemaking efforts. Whereas the project is a regional collaboration spurred by all communities in which the canal was located and is the first to attempt to document the canal in its entirety in Massachusetts. Whereas on August fourth, twenty twenty-one, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that fifteen thousand dollars in Community Preservation Act funds be used as for this project. Now therefore be it ordered that fifteen thousand be a provision of Community Preservation Act funding to the Hampshire Hampton Canal Historical Documentation Project and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and city councils. Specifically fifteen thousand dollars is allocated, allocated from the CPA Historic Preservation Reserve.
Move a positive recommendation to the full city council.
Excellent, thank you.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Quinlan, seconded by Councilor Thorpe. Um, Sarah, did you, anything you wanted to add about this? We heard.
Sure. Yeah, if anybody isn't familiar with the history of the canal, the Hampshire and Hampton Canal Company was chartered in Massachusetts in eighteen twenty-three. And then the canal was constructed between eighteen twenty-six to eighteen thirty-four. After that, it was intended to serve as a major shipping route between the Connecticut River and Long Island Sound. In eighteen thirty-six, it got reorganized as part of the New Haven and North Hampton Canal Company. And it operated until its closure, which didn't take very long, in eighteen forty-five. And then it was replaced by the railroad. The canal was built, operated, and was then abandoned before the advent of photography. And although it was derided as a commercial failure for a generation thereafter, it was very critical in the development of the region. It helped place the railroad in later ninety-one and was critical in forming the way the Connecticut, Connecticut River Valley looked. Interest in the canal and recording of its remains didn't begin until the eighteen nineties. By which time, much of the canal and its engineering features had rotted, eroded, or been reclaimed. And the northern terminus of the canal was located just east of the existing community boathouse site, so a little bit west of the river run condos. And many residents are surprised to learn that portions of Northampton, including State Street, had formerly been canal side waterfront property. And Isaac Damon and whose house, Northampton, historic Northampton is currently located, wasn't really speculated in the canal and related properties. And the Office of Planning and Sustainability and the Historical Commission have been working with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and all of the other Massachusetts canal communities to document the Massachusetts portion of the canal. And this is the first region-wide effort to do that. In Connecticut, the canal is already listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And our hope is that this effort will allow a listing in Massachusetts also. Without this additional work being done to preserve these areas now, the memory and history and, as well as the physical remains of the canal are all in danger of being lost.
Thank you. I can tell you when we've got a lot of stormwater, sometimes State Street still feels like a canal.
Done.
Um, comments, questions, Councilor Quinlan?
I guess I would just ask, Sarah, thank you for the explanation. But also, be, you mentioned it's a regional effort. Are there other communities that are putting money into this effort as well?
Yes, so thi- this effort to document the canal is unique. Northampton has sort of pursued this on its own in years past, but we heard a clear message from the Mass Historic Commission that that wouldn't do. We needed to get everybody else on board. So all of the communities, Southwick, Westfield, Russell, Southampton, and East Hampton are all contributing an equal amount.
Oh, very cool. Thank you.
Other comments? Councilor Nash?
Yeah, thank you. I, yeah, I just think this is a really cool project. The way, you know, you can see the way, if you go around, you can see aspects of the canal, you know, in East Hampton, down to Southampton. And you can see how it used to connect up all, all of the, the various communities. And, and also it's, you know, like canal lanes. I remember going there. How do you get this name? Well, the canal! I was right next to it. And it's amazing how you can be walking around in some of our nature areas and then it's like, oh, look, here's the canal. And then like on State Street, how it's completely obliterated. But anyway, it's, I, I think it's a fascinating project and I, I, I think this is really cool.
Councilor Dwight?
Uh, Sarah, as I, as you mentioned, the evolution of the canal system that came down State Street and then later became the guidelines for the railroad and subsequently also Route ninety-one, but it's also establishment basically of the infrastructure of the rail trails as well, I would imagine.
Yeah, absolutely. So there are canal trails that, that parallel much of the route and where it used to be. So if you travel south from downtown towards East Hampton, that route is basically where the canal used to be. And that, that's the same for a lot of the route down to Long Island Sound.
I, 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 I think, and I, and I do know of the efforts that you referred to of trying, you know, Northampton singular efforts of trying to memorialize the canal system that, that we all knew here. I mean, I, the, the fact I could have stepped out my door at one point, fallen into a canal or floated down to New Haven eventually, that, I mean, that, that's pretty astonishing. It was also the trolley system as well. The, the interurban, another short-lived boondoggle, I guess, but the, the trolley network that existed here as well. So the, it's, it's appropriate to know these things and how they're formed, how, and how they inform what we experience today. And you're right, the, the character of Northampton was defined by the means, the, the avenues and roads that we use and the canals and the, and the, and the railroads and the trolleys. All of that actually informs what our community looks like now. And I think to understand what that was would help us as we go forward.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, roll call please Laura on a positive recommendation.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councilor Shara.
Yes.
And Councilor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with positive recommendation. And we are at twenty-one point three, three, four, in order to reprogram funds for NPS Early Childhood Program Lease. Upon the recommendation of the mayor, ordered that eighteen thousand, three hundred dollars in the Northampton Public Schools Electrical and AC Units Upgrades be reprogrammed to a designated line account in the Central Services Budget to cover the Northampton Public Schools Early Childhood Program Lease at forty Main Street Office for a twelve-month period, November first, twenty twenty-one through October thirty, twenty twenty-two. Whereupon, the Northampton Public Schools will fund any such lease moving forward directly from its budget.
Move to approve to full city council with a positive recommendation.
Second.
This is made by Council of Bards, seconded by Councilor Quinlan, Mayor Narcoitz?
Uh, yes, so currently, the, the Early Childhood Center for Student Services is located in the basement of the Pachowski Building. It's actually where our IT department used to be before it grew and expanded and moved over to James House. And so we sort of have two, two pressures happening here. The, the Early Education Services, Early Childhood Center has benefited from some significant grants that has allowed it to really expand its outreach efforts and, and expand sort of the district's efforts to not only work within the district's preschool programs, but to also do outreach to other preschool programs throughout the city. So they've had an increase in the number of staff as well as ITN staff that go out around the city. So they're kind of bursting at the seams and have been thinking about where they can find new space. And then the other pressure that's happening is the Health Department, which is actually located in that same, in that same part of the Pachowski Building. As you know, from the FY twenty twenty-two budget, has also added staff as well. So we're trying to find space for the Health Department to expand into. And the, and the Early Childhood Center has been looking to find other space to, to house all of its staff. So because we're sort of reaching a critical point here with the school year happening and obviously the, you know, the Health Department bringing on the new staff that were hired as part of the twenty-two budget. This is sort of an, an interim, we hope, an interim solution to get them into an office space. We have been unable to identify a sufficient space within the school. Six school buildings or other municipal buildings. We've had a, a team that's been working on this and looking at all possible space. And so we've landed on this office suite of offices at forty Main Street in Florence, which is across from Cooper's Corner. It has parking, which is really essential for families to be able to get to. It's accessible. It's centrally located in the city. And so in working with the superintendent and Central Services, we sort of landed on the time it would take to, you know, we've had discussions about maybe we'll, you know, maybe we could look at a, at like a trailer, you know, not a trailer, but like a modular unit for an office space or something along those lines. But all the various options, including trying to retrofit separate spaces in separate buildings would be time-consuming and, and we're really facing a space crunch. So the decision was made, we would find a space for them to locate in. They've looked at the space, their, their, the space is sort of move-in ready. Central Services will work with them to get them relocated. I know that Director O'Leary is extremely grateful that the additional space would then be freed up right next door to the Health Department for them to move into. So the city is going to cover the cost for the first year of the lease because this was not anticipated or built into the school budget. And the, the understanding is the school budget will incorporate it into their next year's budget moving forward. If in fact, they do end up staying longer than one year. So this is really just a bridge funding to get them the space that they need. And that's what we're asking for approval. We're going to transfer some funds from a larger project and, and cover the cost of the lease for the, for the one year.
Okay, any questions or comments on this? Okay, seeing none, roll call please Laura on a positive recommendation.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councilor Shara.
Yes.
And Councilor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with the positive recommendation and that's the last item on the finance agenda.
Move to adjourn the finance.
Motion is made by Council Quinlan, seconded by Councilor Thorpe to adjourn, roll call please Laura on adjournment.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan.
Sorry, yes.
Councilor Shara.
Yes.
And Councilor Thorpe.
Yes.
Do we have a break?
Sure, um, let's say, let's bring it to ten o'clock, okay? Back here at ten. Thank you. Council, and let's take up these financial orders because Sarah is still here. So we are, these are in first readings. This is twenty one point three two nine in order authorizing gift acceptance and expenditure on Academy Music restroom expansion and renovation.
Move approval please.
First, seconded by Councillor LaBarge. Discussion. Seeing, oh, Councillor Nash.
Yeah, I just want to say that that in terms of, you know, most of these financial orders, you know, they're like this, they're this attention to detail by, you know, our city finance department. And I really appreciate it and that, you know, that very easily that, you know, that money for in this particular case could have just been in an account and, oh, just start spending it, you know. That's not the way we do things. And I I just a thanks to the mayor and our finance department for the work they do around this and allow us to poke, you know, ask our our questions about it to figure it all out and make sure everything's up to snuff in. You know, every time we do, it is. So, thank you.
Any other comments or kudos? Seeing none, roll call please Laura.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
And Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading. We're at twenty one point three three zero in order to authorize payment of prior year bills to Amoresco, first reading.
Move approval please.
Seconded by Councillor LaBarge, seconded by Councillor Dwight. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please Laura.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
And Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading and we're at twenty one point three three two in order to appropriate FY twenty twenty two CPA funds for community preservation purposes.
Move to approve.
Second.
motion made by Councillor LaBarge, seconded by Councillor Quinlan, I think. Y'all keep moving. Mayor Narcoits, did I see your hand?
It's it's fine. I was, I was going to ask if if the council, I didn't request it, but it occurs to me those those unpaid bills, I'm not really sure whether they require waiting another couple of weeks if we could just get them paid now. So I was gonna ask if you would consider a second reading on that one. It would, but it would lighten up your agenda for your next meeting, which could be a longer one with re precincting on the agenda. So anyway, just, but I was a little, I didn't get your attention soon enough.
Sorry. Can we go or can we go back and do that?
Well, we haven't moved to the next item, so I would make a motion to suspend rules on item twenty one point three zero three, 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 zero.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on suspension? Seeing none, roll call please Laura.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
And Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Move second reading please.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dwight, seconded by Councillor Thorpe on second reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please Laura.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
And Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay.
Move approval on item twenty one, three, three, two.
Motion made by Councillor Dwight, seconded by Councillor LaBarge. Any discussion on CPA funds? Seeing none, roll call please Laura.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Councillor Dwight.
Yes, move to suspend rules, please, to allow for a second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for suspension of rules. Any discussion? Roll call please Laura on suspending rules.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
And Councillor Foster.
Yes. Rules are suspended.
Second reading please.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dwight, seconded by Councillor Jarrett. Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none, roll call please Laura.
Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Councillor Mayori.
Shoot.
We could hear you. Yeah, thank you. There was a lag. Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
And Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in two readings and we're at twenty one point three 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 in order to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars in CPA funds to Hampshire and Hampden Canal Historical Documentation Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor LaBarge, seconded by Councillor Jarrett. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please Laura.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Councillor LaBarge.
Yes. Okay, that passes in first reading, twenty one point three three four in order to reprogram funds for MPS early childhood program lease.
Move approval please.
Seconded by Councillor Dwight, seconded by Councillor Jarrett. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call please Laura on first reading.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
And Councillor Mayori.
Yes. There's a request for two readings.
Move to suspend the rule to allow for a second reading.
Second, second.
Motion made by Councillor Quinlan, seconded by Councillor Jarrett. Any discussion on suspension? Roll call please Laura, spending rules.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
And Councillor Nash.
Yes. Move approval for second reading please.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dwight, seconded by Councillor Quinlan for second reading. Discussion. Roll call please Laura.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
And Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in two readings. We're on financial orders on second reading, twenty one point three two zero in order to suspend parking fees on certain days.
Move approval please.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dwight, seconded by Councillor Quinlan. Discussion on second reading. Seeing none, roll call please Laura.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
And Councillor Shara.
Yes. That passes in second reading, twenty one point three two one in order authorizing release of roof rooftop space on Bridge Street leads in Ryan Road Elementary Schools for solar PV arrays.
Move approval.
I get it.
Motion made by Councillor Jarrett, seconded by Councillor LaBarge. Discussion on second reading. Councillor Quinlan.
I just wanted to thank Councillor Dwight. He made the point about this solar, these solar arrays not causing us to cut trees down. And I actually had two different people that I spoke to in the last week or so mention that to me specifically because they just thought that was wonderful to point out. So I just wanted to tell you that I was grateful for that.
Thank you.
Nice. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call please Laura.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
And Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading and we're at twenty one point three two three. In order to acquire surplus and dispose of a certain property located at thirty three King Street. This is second reading, but there was and there is additional language that has been added, so I'm going to go ahead and just highlight or read that. Which is, this is the last, whereas the city will engage community members, community development stakeholders and economic development stakeholders to help set priorities prior to issuing a request for proposal. And then additionally, under order that in the second paragraph, it's been added after further after obtaining city council approval of the request for proposals prior to its issuance.
Move to accept the amendments please.
Second that.
Motion made by Councillor Dwight, seconded by Councillor LaBarge. Mayor Narcoits, I saw you pop up.
Sure, yeah, just, I'm just wanting to say that these are amendments that we worked on since your last meeting, Director Fiden and myself, and they're in response to the concerns about making sure that the council had a role in this. So obviously, we're acknowledging the, our plans to have a public process and then before any RFP or request for proposals is issued, it would be brought to the council for its review and approval.
Okay, thank you for making those additions. Okay, well, Councillor Foster.
I'll be quick. I had sent Director Fiden an email to this and just wanted to say it publicly to you, Mayor, and to Director Fiden as well. I I really appreciate your responsiveness and including this language in here, particularly naming the public process as well as council approval for any RFP. So thank you for that.
Councillor Quinlan.
I just wanted to understand exactly, you know, what the, what the engagement will be. You know, what, you know, I know that with the redesign of Main Street, there's a number of public meetings to explain it. You know, this doesn't strike me as though it needs probably as many meetings as that. But I'm wondering what the, if you could just kind of highlight what the engagement's going to be exactly.
Certainly, you know, this is something that we've had some, you know, some brief discussions on. I think obviously, the, we are right in the middle of the Main Street redesign. So and we've got one more public meeting scheduled on the nineteenth, I believe, for the next phase of that. So I know we don't want to conflate it with that or or just add another meeting. And then obviously, there's that election thing happening on November second where there would be lots of other public meetings. So my sense would be that really post, you know, post November second that, you know, we'd sit down and we'd be prepared to start rolling out probably some public meetings, some stakeholder outreach as well to try to engage people to to get to come to attend those meetings. I really would defer to Director Fiden to kind of create a roadmap for that, but that would be the, you know, that would be the process. And obviously, any RFP that came to you would be something that, you know, part of the discussion about it would be what, what, what kinds of public outreach went into creating it. But Director Fiden's, I think he's logged on, so if you want to add to that, Wayne, please do.
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree with Mayor. We wouldn't do it before the election. We'd like to be ready, though, as short, as quickly after the election as possible. One of the unknowns for our time right now is we're currently doing our environmental site assessment and the Commonwealth is currently going through their paperwork. And so we're not exactly sure of the timing of some things. We have, I know council's been talking a lot about equity. One of us, we've been trying to do a better job of engaging people is both not have too many meetings because that actually sort of rewards the people who can come. But think about who's not coming to the public forums and do a focus group. So the reason in that, whereas we specifically said, you know, community members as the open part and then both community development, economic development, those are groups we're sort of reach out to at least if they're not represented. But beyond that, we don't have a specific schedule.
Yeah, thank you.
Councillor LaBarge, you had your hand up. Yes.
Thank you. Wayne, I want to thank you very much when I called you to talk to you about my concerns. Thank you. Um, Wayne, I wanna thank you very much, um, when I called you to talk to you about my concerns of having the transparency and the communication with the public. And I think that's so valuable and the city councilors being highly involved in it. So thank you for the language.
I, I feel like I saw another hand. Was there another hand? Counselor Jared.
Yes, so I really appreciate the new version. I feel like it takes into account the concerns we expressed and, and feel very listened to in that. And thanks for meeting with me as well, Wayne.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, um, roll call please, Laura, on this amended language.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Counselor Thorpe. Wait, hold on.
He's recused.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry. Um, okay, and Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. That, um, passes as amended. And we are at twenty-one point three-two-six in order adding parcel on Mount Tom Road and Dyke Road to Connecticut River Greenway Historic Mill River.
Move to approve, please.
Second.
Motion favor by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Nash. Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none. Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Okay, that passes on second reading. We're at orders twenty-one point three-three-one. This is warrant for the November second, twenty-twenty-one biennial municipal election. This is on first reading and upon the recommendation of City Clerk Pamela L. Powers, um, ordered that a meeting of the inhabitants of the City of North Hampton qualified to vote will be held on Tuesday, November second, twenty-twenty-one, in the several polling places designated by the city council as follows. Um, Ward One Precinct A and B in Jackson Street School Auditorium, Ward Two Precinct A and B in the Smith Vocational Agricultural High School Building B, Ward Three Precinct A and B in the Senior Center sixty-seven Con Street in the Great Room, Ward Four Precinct A in the Senior Center sixty-seven Cons and Patty's Front Room, Ward Four Precinct B in the Senior Center in the Activity Room Number One, Ward Five Precinct A in Florence Civic and Business Building at Ninety Park Street, Ward Five Precinct B in Smith Vocational Agricultural High School Building B, Ward Six Precinct A and B in the Robert K. Finn Ryan Road School Gymnasium, Ward Seven Precinct A in John F. Kennedy Middle School Community Room, and Ward Seven Precinct B in Leeds School Gymnasium Lower Level. The polls will be opened at seven o'clock in the forenoon and closed at eight o'clock in the evening of the said day, and all such voters will, within the said hours in the wards in which they are individually entitled to vote, given their votes for mayor for four ensuing municipal years, for two counselors-at-large for two ensuing municipal years, years, for one counselor from each of the seven wards of the city for two ensuing municipal years, for two members of the school committee-at-large for two ensuing municipal years, for one school committee member from each of the seven wards of the city for two ensuing municipal years from the first Monday of January twenty-twenty-two, uh, for three trustees of Smith Vocational Agricultural High School to serve for two years from the first Monday of January twenty-twenty-two, and for one elector under the Oliver Smith will for two years from the first Wednesday of May twenty-twenty-two, and for two trustees under the will of Charles E. Forbes for four years from the first Monday of January twenty-twenty-two.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion favor by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Dwight. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
Sorry, I have a question about that one, if it's not too late.
Um, uh, sure, ask it.
Do we have? Okay, I noticed they didn't have the, um, the vote, uh, for the municipal light plant, and that's not required to be here? Because we already approved it separately.
Hold on. I don't much, uh, Mayor Narcoitz, you know, the answer to that is this, these are just for elected positions, not, um...
Uh, that would be, uh, that would be a city clerk question. I, I hadn't caught that before. Um, yeah, that, that would be a city clerk question. I don't know if the separate order we already approved covers that. Um, that would really be a question for the city clerk.
Okay, um, let's make sure to ask that between first and second reading. Um, thank you for raising that. Uh, okay, we are at ordinances not yet referred. Um, there is a group of ordinances that have come from transportation and parking. So it's twenty-one point three-three-five in ordinance relative to stop signs on Evergreen Road and Chestnut Avenue. Um, I, uh, I'm gonna read them through and then we can consider whether we want to, how we'd like to move them. Um, twenty-one point three-three-six in ordinance relative to off-street handicapped parking spaces. Uh, twenty-one point three-three-seven in ordinance relative to parking on Main Street. Um, although I feel actually the process note for this one, I think, is meant to be in the previous one. Um, so there's a process note that Counselor Foster made the request to TPC to change the word handicap, quote, quote, handicap to quote, accessible in the heading of section three. Um, and the commission felt it didn't have the ability to alter language because it would not be consistent with the wording elsewhere in the city. Um, but they're in favor of the changes council would like to vote it. So that process note goes with the ordinance that was above, um, not the one on Main Street. Uh, twenty-one point three-three-eight in ordinance relative to a stop sign on Cross Path Road. Is there a, yeah?
Counselor Shara, it was actually with that ordinance because I'm pulling up two-three, three-three-seven. In section three, there is a reference here to handicapped parking spaces. I think that's what she intends to change, so.
Oh, because it's in the title of the one before.
Right, right. I, I think it's also.
Yeah, it, I think it, it actually would apply to both. It's just, um, it's a sort of more overarching, um, language change, um, and it's, it's in both of those ordinances.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for, for that clarification, Laura. Um, I, I need a motion.
Move to refer to legislative matters, please.
Okay, are we, how are we, are we referring them one at a time?
I, well, that's, that's where I was confused. I, I would like to move them as a group. Um, yeah, if everyone's okay with that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motions made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge to move these one, two, three, four ordinances from Transportation and Parking Commission to legislative matters. Um, uh, Counselor Jared.
Uh, just a question. Has the Disability Commission weighed in on twenty-one, three-three-six and twenty-one, three-three-seven in any way, or would, would that be appropriate?
Uh, Counselor Foster.
So, it's a, it's part of a larger discussion. Um, the Disability Commission did weigh in back during, um, the ordinance review. Um, it was kind of tucked under housekeeping, um, the ordinance referring to parking in the city and referring it to accessible parking. When these two particular ordinances came up at transportation and parking, and I had made the request to Director Fiden, um, to change the language to say accessible, um, we realized that actually it, it's a larger city code issue. Um, and so Keith Benoit and Director Fiden, um, have gone through the city codes to look at the instances of the word handicapped, and that's gonna come up in planning regarding, um, wheelchair ramps for buildings as well as parking, um, throughout the city. And so Disability Commission weighed in on the initial smaller chunk of this, um, but they have not yet had an opportunity to weigh in on the, uh, larger piece of this puzzle.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes, um, I did talk with, um, the ADA Coordinator Keith Benoit on that the other day and, because I mentioned to him about this, these ordinances. And right now there is not a problem with what Karen Foster is requesting on that ordinance. But the big problem is doing the whole city, which there is a state law. So we're gonna be talking about that. That is the biggie right there, because there is a state law.
Okay, Counselor Nash.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add that, um, yeah, the TPC weighed in on all four of these. Um, there was, uh, uh, Counselor Maori did some great outreach around the Evergreen, uh, uh, road intersection, and so there was plenty of input there. The, the next two around the parking are pretty straightforward. Um, the last one around Cross Path Road, uh, that is, that's down in Ward Three, and there hasn't been, um, any outreach yet around this. And I will, I'll do that and make sure folks are, are aware that this will be a legislative matters.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any further discussion on this group? Seeing none, roll call please, Laura, on referral to legislative matters.
Counselor Maori. Uh, Counselor Maori, are you?
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Cat has a mouse in its mouth, sorry.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Counselor Labarge.
Yes. Okay, those are referred to legislative matters. Um, we are at zoning ordinances not yet referred. Um, this is twenty-one point three-three-nine in ordinance to allow beverage service and entertainment at farm stands under certain circumstances.
Uh, move to refer legislative matters?
And, um, this, so this is a zoning ordinance, so it also needs to go to.
To planning. Um, yeah, well, and, and I was wondering that, well, okay, we'll see what you do. It's not requiring hearing, however, but, um, a joint meeting, planning and legislative matters might be in order, we'll see.
Um, why is it not requiring a hearing?
Yeah, it's, well, it's just subject to review. Um, yes, and for that purpose to hold public hearings. So, yeah, it'd be a joint public hearing for legislative matters and the, and the planning board, sorry.
Okay, um, where was that second? Was there a second?
I thought it was me.
Okay, then Counselor Nash is the second, um, discussion on that referral. Counselor Nash.
Yeah, I had a discussion with Carolyn about this today to really get an idea of, uh, what sort of outreach might need to happen and whether community resources might be a place for it to go. There's really only one establishment that this is, uh, this, this matter has come up with and that, um, I, I think it, it's fine, uh, with just going to legislative matters and the public hearing.
Excellent. That's what's on the floor. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Roll call please, Laura, and I'm mindful of the fact that, oh, there's Counselor Mary. I don't see a mouse, though. Uh, roll caller.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Okay, that is referred, and we are at twenty-one point three-two-five in ordinance relative to compensation for elected officials. This is on first reading. It had, got, gave a, it was given a positive recommendation from Legislative Matters. Um, this, hold on, let me pull it up. So this is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcoitz. Um, what is happening on this, Laura, I don't know if you have a possibility to pull it up, is that what is, uh, we are striking the city clerk from elected officials annual compensation. Um, and also taking out, uh, the, the name that's no longer used for superintendent's, for the trust uses Smith Vocational Agricultural High School. Um, so I can, as you, can we see it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I don't know, I can't see it.
I moved to approve, by the way.
It's not gonna.
Motion favor by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge. So that, the cat's cracking me up. Um, so that, it's, it's fairly self-explanatory. Um, as we previously had happened in this meeting, the clerk is no longer an elected official. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading. We are at zoning ordinances, twenty-one point three-one-three in ordinance to amend the zoning map, section three fifty dash three point four at Chapel Street. This is on first reading. Um, it was given a positive recommendation by, um, Community Resources, and it was given a positive recommendation by both Planning Board and Legislative Matters who held a public, joint public hearing on Monday.
Move approval, please.
Second.
Motion favor by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Um, and discussion, Mayor Narcoitz is here. I don't know if Wayne is still here, but, no, okay.
He does require sleep. I have to, not much, but he does require sleep. Send him home for the evening.
Okay. Um, so, as I said, this was, uh, does anyone wanna speak from one of the other, Counselor Nash from Community Resources, or Counselor Dwight from Legislative Matters on this, or Mayor Narcoitz?
I mean, I'm happy to explain it. I mean, this is another smart growth district that we're creating, um, essentially, which we've done in several other locations up at Village Hill, um, you know, which allows us, I mean, it basically, um, is designed to incentivize what North Hampton already has been doing, which is, you know, building denser housing. Um, and obviously, this is a, a parcel that we're now targeting for affordable housing. Um, and so, um, this will still require approval by the state, by DHCB, um, before a second reading, but this is a important first step to designate this parcel, um, as a smart growth district.
Do you say it needs approval before the second reading from state?
I, uh, yes, before second reading, we hope to hear from DHCB that they approve it. Uh, there's a whole, uh, piece that, uh, we have to provide them with all the information about the parcel, and they have to sign off on it. Um, so, but we think that that could happen between now and second reading.
Okay. Uh, did I say a hand? Counselor Nash and Counselor.
You, you asked for an update. So Community Resources, uh, Carolyn came and spoke to us about this. Counselor Foster did some terrific outreach in the neighborhood. I would say there was about twenty people in attendance and that, um, I would say there was about twenty people in attendance and that, um, a lot of, you know, people had questions, including councillors. Questions were answered and I, my guess is that people after that meeting felt pretty comfortable because I think councillor Dwight, uh, will be reporting that, uh, very few people came to the, the hearing for legislative matters. So, there you go.
Thank you. Councillor Foster?
I was going to give, um, a, a similar update. Thank you councillor Nash. And I wanted to thank councillor Nash for, um, you know, thoughtfully, um, providing that opportunity for, for outreach and discussion. And Carolyn Mish, um, answered, um, a lot of questions during that meeting, as well as many of my own, um, follow-ups, um, in between. So, you know, the, the, um, people living near there, I think, have had, um, a good opportunity to engage with understanding, uh, what this, what this change is. And just, you know, for the benefit of, of, um, the rest of the council, this is, um, the parcel that was originally, um, or not originally, but, um, most recently up in council as it was, um, being proposed for the potential site of an animal control facility, um, the neighborhood. And I mentioned this at the legislative matters meeting, you know, one of the, uh, things that came out of, um, a lot of the neighborhood discussions was really a hope to see more neighborhood feel there, um, living, being so close to Village Hill. There's been a lot of improvements in walkability, um, and a much more neighborhood feel at Village Hill. And there was really a desire to see that kind of crept out a little bit as well. And so affordable housing, um, you know, was one of the proposals that, that came up from the mayor's conversation with the neighborhood. You know, in this, um, overlay district, uh, you know, will have some impact on density. But, um, you know, it's, it's more about the state incentives and, um, uh, you know, the, uh, just a, a step toward, uh, making that happen.
Thank you. Councillor Dwight?
Um, we did in fact convene with, uh, the entire planning board, meeting with, uh, legislative matters, to conduct the mandated public hearing. And, um, councillor Foster was the only person who showed up to represent, ably represent the board and constituents. However, my concern, of course, is this is a mandated hearing, where we did not hear from the residents and their concerns. That was heard in the previous meeting. And I just want, I'm, I'm a little concerned that the constituents may feel that as the process, as these processes go, to have, this is chronicled by state law and is actually embedded in the zoning. And the fact that there's no testimony reflected in the hearing is problematic on some level. So that's something for us to work out in the future. To the issue, in fact, it's, it's important because, uh, everyone knows, or mostly everyone knows that historically the purpose of, um, building housing on Village Hill, uh, was inspired some thirty years back by a number of North Hampton residents, including the future mayor, who actually went and occupied the old hospital grounds and demanded an opportunity for housing, to create housing. Most, most communities, when they, uh, decommissioned their state hospitals, their elaborate Victorian state hospitals, what they did was, um, converted them to golf courses because it's great open space, they turn a municipal golf course. North Hampton's priorities were unique and, um, aspirational. Those aspirations weren't necessarily achieved to the extent, at least that I held, that with the, a greater opportunity for affordability, um, diversity in the neighborhoods, at the same time also being very green oriented. It comes close. It, I mean, it certainly, it's not completely, it has not been completely ignored. But the fact that we have an opportunity here to, to offset the, um, accessibility and affordability of the, of the neighborhood even more to enhance it is, is an opportunity that I'm grateful for. And I'm glad as I, as I shuffle off that, um, this project is ongoing with that same, um, commitment and devotion to those, those principles. So I'm glad to see this. I, I, I'm very excited at the opportunity to appeal to the state and hope that they see the wisdom in our request.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Narkwitz, uh, councillor Foster mentioned the state incentives. And I'm wondering if you could elaborate a little bit more, just for the people who weren't in either of those two meetings, about, you know, what have, what, what sort of incentive a smart growth overlay will, um, will, uh, you know, in, afford us, I guess.
Um, so basically, there's like a, um, as, as units are issued occupancy permits, uh, there's like a per-unit incentive that gets paid to the city. Uh, and I, I confess, I can't quote you the exact incentive where it's set right now. But obviously it's cumulative. So, you know, it's, you know, um, you know, so many thousand dollars per unit. And so that gets paid to the city as an incentive that then we use for smart growth initiatives to advance additional affordable housing or making other types of improvements. So, uh, that's how it works. I, 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 I can't quote you the number. We can certainly get that information for you. But basically, um, uh, I was, I think, well, this used to be Ward four and I was the Ward four councillor. And, you know, when we created the very first one up at Village Hill, um, and, you know, it was a kind of a no-brainer because North Hampton was already, um, you know, the zoning for the, for Hospital Hill was already at the density that the state was trying to incentivize. So, um, it was kind of, you know, okay, well, free money, we'll do this because we're already going to build to that density. So, um, some may remember that we did a small smart growth district in Ward three for Sergeant House. Um, and so, um, but I don't, I can't tell you the exact per-unit amount that DHCD is paying right now. But certainly I can get that to you before second reading.
Okay, it was just more the concept that I wanted sort of to explain.
Totally, yes.
Great, thank you. Any, any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none. Uh, roll call, please Laura, on a first reading.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe. I saw a hand go up. Councillor Thorpe, that's.
Oh, you know what? He might have gotten.
Yes.
Who did?
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor La Barge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
And councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously on first reading and that brings us to the end of our agenda, folks.
So I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Motion's made by councillor Dwight, seconded by councillor La Barge to adjourn. Roll call, please Laura, on adjournment.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor La Barge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
And councillor Shara.
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Councillor Mayori, did the mouse escape?
Mouse, mouse is saved. I can't believe how loud they can scream.
Yeah.
It just really.